We'll call this meeting to order. Stand on the side of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next will be the approval of the minutes. Has everybody read the minutes? If so, I bring additions, corrections. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Edley to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Maitiri. Is there any more discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any, are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next will be the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections?
I don't think I got us in the old road matters, but I guess that's probably.
Well, I would say with that, we got Skylar on the county road department and also part of that, I see old engineering is on the agenda and just part of that discussion is going to be Seventeenth Avenue, which is, you know, up towards County Lineup there, Judy and Bert Carlson's place up northeast of Braddock. They have some solutions for some short-term and long-term stuff, so if that's something you want to bring up, that's already on the agenda.
Is it also going to be talked about, those projects by Singer Lake and up there by Omba? Will those projects approved or...? Because I've got guys calling me.
Old is going to be, yeah, I think Eighty-Eighth is probably something we'll get an update on over there, kind of that Singer Lake deal. And then as far as the, like up by Braddock, you're talking about the box cover.
Yep.
I think we can get an update, but if I remember right, it's probably still being prepped for bids. So it's probably, but yeah, they're, John, I was told John's going to be down here from Wolf's, so he's going to be in here, so if you've got any questions for that, Wolf is going to be available for any project questions too, so. Are there any, is there any other evidence? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Maitiri. Is there any more discussion on the agenda? Not hearing any, are those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. First item up on old and unfinished business will be the update on public nuisance, eight zero eight zero Highway eighty-three South, Arlington. As far as an update, did, Joe, do you have any contact with Trash Incorporated or anything? If they're interested in assisting in the cleanup?
I didn't, I tried to get hold on that day and then I got the ball through, so.
I have a person interested, but he wants to look at it first.
Okay.
I'm not going to mention the name or title.
I don't see that being a problem, though, if they want, you know, probably have to get in contact with.
What happened, you had, when you pulled in?
No, the contact I had, the one who was interested last year, is too busy, so he's not interested anymore, so. So I would say you probably just have to coordinate with the Sheriff's Department, so just have somebody out there, so we, you know, just trespassing on somebody's property, but.
Right.
Kevin, I see you're here, do you have, do you have anything to add on the situation? Or, I mean, what else, we're talking about your property?
I left some information on this sheet.
Okay, yeah, I have it on the other.
If I could touch base on that.
Quickly, yes.
Pardon?
I said quick, I will give you some time, we don't want to take too long getting out of traffic.
I just would like to kind of see where the two axes are on the upper left. Jim Hyde, we wanted to have a vote between person on what needs to be done, observation, some things, because I had Aaron come up and help, give me some insight on what to do last year, and that was helpful, because you look at the papers of what all needs to be done, it's hard, it's confusing, and it's hard to get to everybody's thoughts or feelings on that. I am a person that does state things, and usually storage things are in one of my two compartments, which is the metal white trailer and then the woods white trailer. And I wanted to try and get something on my slab, which is a thirty by forty slab for a work area. And so that's what I would like to do this summer. I have retired from being a teamster, truck driver, and I would like to kind of do that more in a contracting basis. So I'll be a sole proprietor to do that. I have an LLC as well, and on the house, I've needed a lot of things done on that house, so I'm hoping that I can get Rod Jangleit to do the buddy system to help me do windows, because the north side of that house is terrible, too much glass in the layup and construction. And I've helped him, he's helped me, and there's a buddy system, same thing with Jim Hyde. And if he would be the go-to person in the way of if Aaron or somebody else has to do that, and then we can handle it at our independent basis, and if there's a concern, I guess, you know, deal with that, go to Aaron on a time schedule. And I don't have much done, been a lot of wind this year, been a lot of rain, which is really nice for the farmers, but I haven't been able to get more than a couple of days of sixty, seventy degree temperature to do some of the things. And then I will continue to do this on a thirty-day basis. If you would be lenient with me, and you've done that before in the past, then I'll promise if we've got a checklist or a must-do list, that will be done.
Well, just, I'm just, for the sake of time and everything too here, because I, the one thing that probably needs to get brought up more than anything is, I don't know if you know, but that, that road that goes by your place, that's, that road has an easement, that's not really a public right-of-way, my knowledge. So like you have vehicles parked on the other side of the road, to my knowledge, unless somebody can correct me, that's private property, so unless you've got permission to park that stuff there, you're actually trespassing on, that's not like public right-of-way there, that's.
Are you talking about the railroad?
Well, I'm talking on the south side of the access road going by that property. That, you know, that corridor is only so wide to allow road and maybe a small amount of right-of-way, so if you park on the other side of that, you're actually parking on, I believe that's Jokun's property, so. Unless you have permission, I mean, that could turn into a civil matter too, those ones. Like it's, I mean, some of the stuff you've got going on there is not just ordinance stuff, you're actually like impacting other people's property by parking your stuff around it, so.
And if I meant wrong, that will be changed, it's, I was under the understanding that the property was mom adols from the field all the way over.
It could be, I don't know exactly, I just, I know Jokun's worked that area, maybe they rented, I don't know, but all I know is that property on the other side of the road, there's not a property there outside of the road that's actually allowed for travel, so if you're parking stuff there, that's actually like trespassing, I mean, I.
It's with the rain, with the snow melt, rain and snow melting, I can't move anything.
Right, but I.
Around my place, and that's why I've done that there, so that.
Right, but the trespassing, while you don't care about the weather, Kevin, I mean, that's what I'm just trying to tell you. Like your, your stuff is starting to impact other properties and more than just, just the setting, so. And I think for now, for the sake of time here, I mean, I mean, the county's been lenient, and we're doing the best we can to work with you, but we need to get that property kind of in orderly fashion here, so, I mean, that's something we can consult with here afterwards. You know, we do have some interested parties that might be willing to clean it up, we're going to have to work on something to get it cleaned up either our way or your way, so. Say if we want to continue this discussion, we'll have to put it on the agenda for another time, I mean, so.
Yes, if we have to do that, I would appreciate that.
Okay, and if you want, I need, I think we're going to keep doing updates until that property's cleaned, so you can just plan on it being on the agenda until we get to a point where we don't need to talk about it anymore, just for reference, so.
Every three months, I have given photos to Sheriff Sanders on a basis, so then there could be an observation at whatever time, that would be during the late fall and during the winter, and then in the spring, so I have done some, so, yep, I guess I am.
Just so you're aware, if we get somebody coming in there cleaning up, they're going to clean it up, so you know. I mean, I feel bad for you, I mean, in a sense, but I feel bad for the other people now, living beside you there, because they have to live with that for a long time already.
Right.
They got little kids over there and stuff and.
Yep, I put up the fence.
Well, that fence blew down earlier.
Right, yes.
In the process of getting fixed and repaired, I purchased the nutrid post for that, and that will be done very shortly. I promise that to be done in two weeks.
Sure. Do we want to continue this discussion? Because if we do, we can push it back later on the agenda, or, I mean, if not, we're just going to.
I think we just should let Kevin know that if we get somebody to come in there cleaning up, they're going to come in there cleaning up.
It'll be cleaned up.
Yeah, some's got to get done one way or the other.
Yep. But I mean, the update for now is we have an interested party, but we don't have anyone for sure. And if that comes to light, then we'll have to make a decision if we want to bring someone in, so. That's kind of the update though, I mean, is everybody satisfied with that? I mean, we can talk about it more, but we'll just have a question. I don't want to drag this out, we push the whole agenda out, so if we're, I mean, I'm not trying to be rude either, Kevin, but we don't have the time, unless you want to make the time, so.
We can, it's with you independently.
That'd be fine, but if not, then that's kind of the update where that stands, everybody's okay with that? Okay, then we'll move on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next item is the county vehicle policy discussion. I read over the policy, but basically, if I'm just going to give a Cliff Notes version, basically the decision's up to us, the, the stuff that's, you know, happening with the county vehicle. I don't necessarily see a policy violation, it's more so a discretion thing as far as what we're considering, things like, you know, do we want someone going and picking stuff up all the time? Or do we not think it's a big deal? Do we, you know, because that's, that's the big thing, I don't, I don't see a violation of the policy, more so just an interpretation of it, because when we had other road superintendents that lived in the county, you know, they took the vehicle home too, because there was kind of an emergency scenario, hey, they got a truck or whatever, like. Now that we have someone that doesn't live outside the county, we probably just need to be a little more specific on what we consider necessary use or what's going on, so.
Well, it's not just the superintendent, it's the county workers. I see them go to Dollar General through the day, county vehicles getting snacks. Why can they not do that the night before and get their snacks? They're on county time, county vehicle.
I guess I haven't seen that enough.
I've seen it more than once. This morning, I, that they were down there getting snacks, because, oh, quarter to nine, that's county time.
That's county time, I'll agree with you, Craig. When I worked destruction and elsewhere, you packed lunch, you packed a thermos, right? You went to work, you punched in, you stayed there.
Marcy doesn't pop in a white vehicle, go get a snack through the day, she stays here and works.
And Joe Hudson goes and gets a pop, he goes in his vehicle, and Joe gets his personal vehicle. And you drive, and people on the other end get the departments, they drive their personal vehicles. I feel when it's in the minutes, if I read it right, that it states that we were not going to furnish a vehicle to drive back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
You're hired as an employee of the county, you figure out what you're going to do to get here and how you're going to get here, and that expense is on them. When you get here, you jump in the county vehicle, you conduct business, and that's the way I look at this. There's other employees at different departments that live in Bismarck elsewhere, and they make it at their expense to get here at eight o'clock with their own vehicle, and that's the way I look at this.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, when we first hired them, we had the agreement that we paid them extra not to use the county vehicle to drive back and forth.
Three grand, right?
Yeah, and, you know, basically, we're just, everything, you know, it's just kind of thrown out the window. It was the agreement that he was supposed to move down after probation, that never happened, and we gave him the extra three thousand dollars, and that seemed to be thrown out too.
I, yeah, there's here common carriers, guys, there's five common carriers that come down here every day to bring parts and whatever. And there's another source, I've talked to a business here in town, if he needs parts and he misses a carrier, he'll call this guy by eleven AM, and he'll go and pick the part up for him wherever it's at, and deliver to his place of business for ten bucks. And I just, I don't feel we can run vehicles to Bismarck.
They won't, they won't run down here for ten bucks, all right?
Well, they come down here every day, I don't know.
No, but if he misses, if he misses a carrier.
All he, all you got to do is call him by eleven AM, him and his wife will bring these parts down for ten bucks a day.
From Bismarck?
They come down right into the grocery.
Is that the?
It's a vendor, I believe, am I right, on the board and the name?
Well, exactly, you were talking about the one that lives on the north side of town, because he drives that trailer for.
Cross-country.
Cross-country, that's the one, is that, that's not the one, okay. Well, like I said, it's, I think the discretion that's being used is that stuff's getting picked up in Bismarck and Skylar isn't doing it because he lives in Bismarck. If we're not okay with that, that's fine, the policy basically states that it kind of can and can't be allowed based on what we say. I don't know if you have to change the policy specifically, the main thing is just to relay it, that's like, well, we don't believe that's necessary. The only trouble that I would say with that, and I'm not saying that you can't stop it or anything, it's just that, you know, somebody's going to have to kind of manage that too, because otherwise, if you're going to have guys not taking it to Bismarck, or you have to set a rule, like you're going to take it to Bismarck, but it's only going to be during work hours, something like, you know, because if you need something and you're going to go to Bismarck and get it, I mean, if that runs into everybody too, it's like, like at what point do you say it's the right thing or the wrong thing? That's all I'm saying, like that, for the description, because it's two in the afternoon and you know you need a part, and you send a guy to do it, was that something we should have waited a day? Or we should have done, like, are you going to punish people, or are you, like, that's where I'm, I.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to criticize what you're saying, like, if there's abuse going, it needs to be handled, and we need to be talked about, and even like what Craig brings up, if they're running to the Dollar General to county vehicle, I'm kind of curious as to why. The only reason I will bring anything up with that is you have guys like maybe Gar or somebody that came and they brought the county vehicle down to the shop once they got to work. They got, like, Gar goes to Braddock with his personal vehicle, if they wanted him to come to Linton for work, he takes the county truck from Braddock to here. Well, if he did need to go do something, or maybe he was on the way from picking up parts and he swung in and grabbed a pop, like, I mean, is that the kind of stuff we're going to manage specifically? And if we are, that's fine, but that's the things you have to take into consideration. You might have seen the one thing, but that might have been his third stop this morning, they're saying come up to maybe Sailor, Nodak and something else, and he swung in and grabbed something. I, I, I mean, if, if that's what you want to do, fine, but I don't think it's wholesale abuse like that, which is like, I'm going to Dollar General to get a pop with the county truck, it was probably on the way from something else. I don't feel like we have the kind of employees that are totally abusing it. Are they going outside of the expectation? It probably happens, I don't disagree with it, and if we want to be tougher on it, fine, but. Yeah, I, I, like even what you're saying, right, it's just, it's something to consider, and then even like you said with the Bismarck trips, is once a week too much? Is once a week okay because it's a certain part? Do we describe what certain parts are, like, that's just, it's a line.
Even if he takes his, even if we don't let him take the county vehicle, if he takes the personal vehicle, go back and forth, and he picks something up, maybe we can just reimburse him for.
For mileage, absolutely.
For his mileage.
I think that's the smart thing to do.
I don't, I don't disagree at all.
I mean, if it was a big part of transmission, you know, transmission or something, we had the whole something, that's different.
Well, then, if somebody delivered one, you know.
Or if he needs to use the county truck, then, then that's something, a scenario where, like you said, you make him do it during work hours, but I know, I know I had a suggestion, Mr. Gardner had it, which is an excellent idea too, and it's something that probably happens from, are we exploring every option locally before we're going to Bismarck too? That's what I, because, you know, twenty years ago, the fourth road superintendent from now, and this guy, I didn't get along, neither one of them worked at those places, but we don't do business no more, because everybody that worked here when that happened, like, oh, we don't do bit well. Have we opened those lines of communication yet? Are we making sure we're getting as much stuff done locally? Even if you're overpaying a hair by the time you figure the mileage and the time, it's cheap, so. That's probably more the policy we probably need to be advocating, more than whether or not the vehicle is maybe getting misused, is that are we making sure we're doing everything at Strasburg, Lincoln, Hazelton, whatever, Hey, I mean, there's a Tegger, you know, can they fix a tire? Can they order one in? If you could wait two days, but it's delivered to Strasburg, what the heck, you know, like. Those are probably the avenues that we need to explore, because some past relationship got broken, and so we just don't even call them no more, that probably needs to change, so.
That's petty, yeah.
I would actually, you know, commend Mr. Gardner on that, I mean, not that it's, you know, going to solve everything, but it's just something that you just kind of get caught in tunnel vision, that's the way we do things, and maybe we don't need to do them that way no more, that's probably the biggest thing. And I agree with your common carrier scenario too, is where, well, I don't want to pay fifteen dollars to wait a day for it, well, in the grand scheme of things, that's not that big a deal, so. But, I mean, you know, you're dealing with characters that have been out there for years too, that this is the way we do things, we just go get it, we get well, maybe we don't want to do it no more, so. I would advocate for that being more of a policy direction than trying to micromanage specific things that are going to be difficult to micromanage, because you're going to end up managing out productive or efficient ways of doing things, because you're trying to, you know, you're stepping over dime, or dollars to save dimes sometimes, where I think we probably just need to advocate for online purchases, shipping purchases, buying local, even if it's five dollars or ten, you know, and you got to support your local businesses anyway, and then on top of it, you're getting more efficient with some things. Maybe they will start supplying us with things if we buy it from there. Somebody might not supply it for us, because, well, we never really asked, but if we'll buy twenty of that, you get a bulk discount, they get it shipped in, we need to probably explore that. Can I add something else, Commissioner Magrum? My dad is a retired partsman in Wishick, and I found out about a month ago, he did some cross-referencing of John Deere in Wishick and was able to get cutting edges for the grader in Wishick, which I passed on to Tyler Gross, my stepson. And same thing here, a lot of people were running to Bismarck to get cutting edges for graders, John Deere can get those, you know, we have tire guy, we have a guy right here that'll come out to a grader and fix a tire. DFC will do the same thing in Hazelton. I mean, this is Evans County taxpayer dollars, and in my opinion, as much as we possibly can spend should be spent in Evans County, the rest I get running to Bismarck, we all run to Bismarck for everything, it has to be done sometimes, but.
Yeah, I don't really know what, what are they running to Bismarck for, do you really know?
Well, I think there's certain things, like you said, you go to Butler, you go to RDO, but have we looked to see if you can get it? Well, you just assume, well, we need that at Butler, and you go get it at Butler, and it's like, well, that might be true on certain things, no doubt, but there's some things you could probably, like James said, you can. And all you have to do is ask, maybe they've never been asked, and they look in, and they're like, oh, we can get them, and now you've created a relationship, so that's, those are probably the avenues that need to get explored more than anything, so. That's a start to working, that pickup not being seen so often in places, in my opinion. Right. And then maybe Skylar taking it to Bismarck isn't quite such a big deal when you're not seeing it ten other times in the week, doing other things, running here and there for stuff. Yeah.
There's a lot of things I don't feel you have to run to Bismarck that day to get. I farm too, and you don't need it a lot of times that day. You can call it in, yep, I got such-and-such guys coming down tonight, you'll bring it along down there, drop it off at such-and-such point, you make arrangements.
Unless, unless the blade is broken.
Unless it's a blade, but it's under warranty, nine out of ten of these blades are under warranty.
You need a bag of bolts, or maybe I can wait tomorrow.
Well, I think, and getting back, I think that's the clarification we need to be relaying, is that not everything is an emergency, and that, you know, because if you create a policy that limits your emergencies, now you're really kind of hurting yourself, when what you need to do is limit it down by the expectation of going, hey, if you're down for a half a day, like, and they're going to deliver it the next morning, it's fine, like, and just, that's probably the avenue that needs to go, because.
We got a lot of other work to do there.
Well, and I just, I, I don't want to create a policy where all of a sudden you have everything limited and now we're like, well, now everybody's breaking the policy, so you're either going to ignore the policy, or now you've got to start enforcing it all, or when it needs to be enforced in a specific area, you just go, hey, we don't need that thing going to Bismarck all the time, or, you know, do you want to create some kind of a parameter, like, maybe within a work schedule, like, we just don't want it overnight? But I, I'm fine with all that, I just, I don't want to get too caught up in the idea that we have to change a policy, it even says in the policy manual, that not everything will be perfect and that there's discretion, that's because you can't make a policy that's going to satisfy everything, everybody, that's the hardest part.
That can hurt you down the road.
I just don't want to advocate for reacting and go, we fixed that policy, and now later on, it's like, well, now you've got to punish your auditor because of one of them, well, you know, the rules are the rules, and now you're, you're suspending people, I just, I don't want to go too far when I think it could be handled in other ways, and I think the ideas we brought up are something we just need to keep, we need to advocate more of an atmosphere of local support, it can maybe wait a half a day and, and try not to be treating everything like, well, we've got to just do it today, and that's, that's not.
So then, being we're speaking about it, where do we go on this polit, or on this policy as far as this pickup going back and forth to Bismarck on a nightly basis? I want it explained to me, and I want a motion, whatever, that this vehicle will not be going back and forth to Bismarck overnight, you make arrangements as a superintendent, how you're going to get here, and you'll be here by eight o'clock, that's just your job assignment.
Well, I think, I think the big thing would be is you'd have to make something, like you don't want it overnight,
or you want that vehicle operating, like, if you're going to go to Bismarck, then you're going to have to go up at two in the afternoon and bring it back, but go get the stuff and bring it back, like, if that's the policy you want, that's, that's what I was trying to clarify, that, that's how you fix that, like. Because if you're going to make a motion, I might as well just put it in the policy book that you're going to do. I mean, if you're going to amend the policy book, I mean, that's the thing, like, I don't.
I don't like what you want to amend.
Right, I mean, so that, I'm, that's where I was just trying to get to my point, where like.
I would just say if you need something, compensate them for mileage.
That's the way I would agree with you, Dobby, hundred percent.
I'd rather do that than you don't have to sit there and explain to people why it always goes back. And then he's got to receive this legitimate thing, well, then.
Just undo.
If it's something that the vehicle that you have can't do, like, if it's something so big, then you get delivered, or you go pick it up here in work hours, I mean, I mean, if that's the message you want to do, or that's the, I mean, I'm fine with that, that's, we just need to have that kind of clarification, so you have something to actually give them to expect, then.
And I think you've just got to put a stop to it.
Because I don't know, how many times, does he take it a lot?
I don't know, does he take it three days, I don't, I don't babysit, I have no idea. Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Well, I'm sure it's, it's probably in stretches, it's probably two or three days in one week, and then it's probably once or none for some weeks, and then other times it's a lot. I suppose it depends on a variety of things, and, and like you said, it's whether or not you can, if that's the expectation, or it's not going to be overnight, then that's, that's how you solve it, I mean, you just make that.
At the end of meetings, we go through our bills, and the last few months, I would keep a track of how many receipts come from Bismarck, there's not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot of receipts from Bismarck.
So maybe he's not taking it, but that one, I have no idea.
Well, I think it's.
I just feel that you stay here, you make arrangements, what you're going to use to drive down there, you're hired to be an employee of Evans County, you show up, you punch in, or whatever you do, or you, if you're a paid salary employee, you jump in the county pickup and you conduct business from that point on.
I think for the sake of time, or we'll, we'll continue this discussion a little when Skylar comes in then, because that's obviously, I think we're in a consensus of the message we want, so let's just relay it there, so we can keep going.
Good.
There. The request for gravel for James Hyde on the road located on northeast corridor, section thirty-two, township one thirty-three, range seventy-six, table from the last meeting, is Mr. Hyde here? Okay, oh, he's not, so we'll, we'll push that off till Skylar's part then too, so we can keep the agenda moving, so. We'll just move that, we can discuss it here, he'll come in later, or we can discuss it later, so. Next item will be Troy Remick with county issues, you're next on the agenda.
Good morning, I would like to talk about current county road conditions. I have lived in this county for almost thirty years, in that I have been out in the country for twenty of them. In the past twenty years, I have witnessed a severe decline in the quality of road conditions. Its current state is so bad that even a small amount of rain, less than one inch, I cannot even get to my house. And it isn't just me, it's others in the county that are having the same problem, according to Mr. Prelewitz. I have less than two miles of county gravel to drive, and in this, this road is a far demarcated road. As bad as the road has ever been in the past, I've always been able to drive to my house until August of two thousand twenty-three. I questioned Mr. Commissioner Magrum on this, and as usual, he did not respond. On April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, I spoke to Mr. Prelewitz, and his response was simple, quote, "Most people who live in the county have a four-wheel-drive pickup." This is his solution. He also stated, quote, "The only reason I am complaining is because he got the road superintendent job and I did not." I don't care who has the road superintendent job, if that person can do the job, based on the quality of the county road since he has been hired, Mr. Prelewitz is not qualified. At the request of Commissioner Magrum, I started coming to the commissioners' meeting to discuss the poor quality of roads with Nick Lawler being supervisor. On January seventh, two thousand twenty-one, Commissioner Magrum texts me, quote, "That road is on a short list of roads that needs to be reworked this spring or summer." Three years later, nothing has been done. I have numerous correspondence with Commissioner Magrum with nothing but excuse after excuse as to why nothing has happened, it's too dry, bad gravel, cattle trucks, Al doesn't listen, the road needs to be reshaped, and more. Commissioner Magrum texts me on December sixth, two thousand nineteen, quote, "That road is rough. The only way to fix it is to get a supervisor in there who actually wants to fix the road. I'm the only commissioner who will actually bring it up. The others just want to bitch about it and do nothing. I want to replace Nick with someone who gives a damn."
Which we did.
In Europe. Yet after saying that, Commissioner Magrum was the driving force to hire Mr. Prelewitz. Now numerous people throughout the county are unable to get to their homes when it rains. At least while Nick was supervisor, I was always able to get to my home. A little over two years ago, the county commissioners hired Skylar Prelewitz. Mr. Prelewitz interviewed two. Mr. Prelewitz interviewed two previous times for this road superintendent position prior to being offered the position. I interviewed twice. After my first interview, I was offered the position due to lower than expected compensation, fifty-one thousand dollars a year. I respectfully declined the offer. During that process, I discussed with Commissioner Magrum what a reasonable salary for this position would be. I felt that at the time, sixty-six thousand dollars a year would be fair. When the county reopened the hiring for this position in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, the salary range was advertised as sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars, depending on experience. This new salary range encouraged me to reapply. Yes, I questioned the interview process, wondering how someone who was offered the job two years earlier and has experience was not selected. The person who was selected has little to no experience in supervisory role based on his previous job title at Burley County as a highway maintenance worker, class two. Based on his public personnel file, Mr. Prelewitz had been formally written up and suspended for insubordination and disrespectful conduct just six weeks prior to being hired by Evans County. Had the commissioners completed their due diligence during this hiring process, they would have discovered this information. This information is what led to my questioning the county's hiring process. On April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, Mr. Magrum said that I have, quote, "Waged a personal war against him and the county," end quote. Because I didn't get the superintendent job? I have a superintendent job already. I have been a superintendent and supervisor for over thirty years. I have been corresponding with Commissioner Magrum since two thousand eighteen regarding the current road status. But suddenly I am the problem and waging war because I expect accountability, decent roads that the residents of this county are paying for. The county hired Mr. Prelewitz with two stipulations, which ironically were, some of them were addressed this morning. He was not allowed to drive the county pickup to his home in Bismarck and he was required to move into the county. To the best of my knowledge, he still is not living in the county. I commute daily to Bismarck for work. I have records passing Mr. Prelewitz driving the county pickup on his way to Bismarck over thirty times with more. The most recent time being April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. If he lives in Evans County, why is he driving the pickup back and forth so much? This issue has been brought to, brought up many times by me and others. Commissioner Magrum vigorously defends Mr. Prelewitz's use of this county pickup, even against other commissioners. I've asked Commissioner Magrum several times why Mr. Prelewitz is allowed to drive the county pickup back and forth to Bismarck. After it was decided by the commissioner that he could not, Commissioner Magrum finally responded to me and said, quote, "The county pickup issue has been addressed several times on record in meetings. It's on YouTube, you are welcome to see for yourself." I have heard Mr. Prelewitz is, quote, "Giving parts" and that is why he drives the county pickup. But why is the county sending him with the county pickup back and forth, sometimes three days per week? When we have two local auto parts stores, most of the parts and truck companies in Bismarck where he would be going for parts have sales routes that bring them to Linton several times per week. I thought the commissioner hired, hired a road superintendent to fix the county roads, not to be an overpaid parts runner. With all this being said, I feel Commissioner Magrum should resign as commissioner for several reasons. Your layup loyalty does not lie with Evans County, it lies with Mr. Prelewitz. You not only condone and support this action, you go to great lengths to defend his inability to satisfy the needs of this county. What is in the best interest of this county and its residents should be your priority, and clearly it is not. Evans County has a large rural population and everyone in this county needs gravel roads properly maintained. Are we supposed to shut down our lives because of a little rain that our farmers desperately need so they can continue to pay the taxes to support the county? People need to work, get to work, kids need to get to school. What would happen if there was an emergency and the ambulance or fire truck could not get to where they need to go because of the roads? Whose responsibility would it be? The counties? Our taxes go up every year, yet our service hours are declining at an exponential rate. I've been complaining about my road for years and ironically, yesterday morning, I finally got gravel on my road. I wonder how you guys plan on fixing all of these issues that I brought up?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Remick? I think the main thing is the roads, but I don't know how we're gonna fix them all, I don't know how we're gonna fix them.
This rain has been great, Troy, but it's, it's an enemy, all these roads.
It's, it's long before this, this rain this year. Last year in Au- in August, I think it was, like I said, I could not get to my house, I had to walk to my house, drive my pickup from my house down to, down the hill and back. I asked Mr. Magrum about it and as usual, he ignored me, as he's done for years.
Well, that's kind of confusing because you have all my quotes.
No, I have asked, yeah, every now and then you'll chime in.
I mean, and I, I mean, so the correspondence needs to be.
So what is your question, or what is your answer about resigning?
Well, I would say no.
Why? Do you?
I don't feel like I'm doing a horrible job, am I perfectly real? I, well, I understand.
And I hope, I hope that a lot of the people in Evans County also agree with me because I have asked you numerous times about Skylar and ironically, again, the whole driving the pickup back and forth, trying to get ahead of me and everything, well, maybe you did, maybe you didn't.
But you, I don't know, you even tried to get hit, that was then on the agenda, we've been talking about.
Why has it been talked about for so long? When you guys hired him, like you guys spoke about this morning, you gave him a three thousand dollar raise and he could not drive the pickup. Then all of a sudden, you start driving the pickup. And then when you're asked about it, you ignore people. You say he's getting parts.
That's not, I mean.
Peterbilt brings parts down here three times a week, Freightliner brings them down here every day but Thursdays. The other truck companies have runners every day, yet you guys are still talking about paying him to go to Bismarck to get parts. That's ridiculous. He's supposed to be a supervisor, a manager, somebody in that position getting paid what he is getting paid, shouldn't know all these things. Obviously, he does not, because he's never done it before. Why was his write-up before he got hired never discovered? And I have it right here, if anybody would like to see it. Anybody want to see it?
I'd like to see it too.
I believe Mr. Magrum was supposed to do his reference check, did you do it?
Well, we had the HR manager at that time and we were doing things.
The HR manager did it or you did it?
I didn't do it, I'll tell you.
Why?
I didn't do it.
You said you were gonna do it.
I didn't do reference checks on Francis Crum or any of these people, I mean.
Why? Isn't that part of the job of the commissioners? Doesn't somebody do reference checks?
Well, I mean, was he terminated from Burley County for that?
Obviously not.
Well, then I don't see if, I mean.
Oh, so somebody that got rolled up six weeks prior to hiring one of the highest positions in the county is not a big deal to you?
I'm not saying it's not a big deal.
That's what you're just, that's what you just implied.
I'm saying it got missed, but he didn't.
It got missed? Why?
Because it checked out, I'll admit that, fine.
The commissioners did not do their due diligence on checking out their employees, did they?
Apparently not.
Apparently, and aren't you one of those?
I am.
And that is another reason I said you should resign, because you don't care about this county.
I'm not gonna resign because you're upset with me, there's plenty.
Oh, it's just me that's upset?
I know, okay, Troy, I'm.
Again, you're gonna try to filibuster me, like you always do.
No, I'm gonna, like the chairman.
And cast shade on me.
Keep it under control here.
All right, am I out of line?
I didn't see you.
Am I out of line? Anybody else think I'm out of line?
I'm not try, all I'm trying to do is tell you that I do.
Maybe you should let some other people talk instead of just you.
I thought you were asking me the questions, now everybody's supposed to speak, like, this is the point I'm trying to get at here, Troy.
I'll come up and tell, yesterday, you couldn't do anything to my road, last year you guys couldn't do, I talked to Gary. Both of you, I have both of you, nobody responds.
Well, did anybody?
Last spring, it was a one-lane road.
Troy, just one second. Did anybody tell the road department to go out and gravel the road to go into Troy's place?
Do they need to be told?
I did. You did?
I did.
You told them to put gravel on?
I said that, I said it needs gravel.
And you told them to do it yesterday?
I didn't tell them when to do it, no, I just said it needs gravel. I just, yeah, I told them that it needs gravel, I went out there and I looked, I said it needs gravel, going up the hill and stuff, and I didn't tell them when to do it, though.
Right, and I, I told them it needs to be done too, the fact that it got done yesterday has nothing to do with the fact that you were coming into the meeting.
But since last August, I haven't been able to get to my road when it rains. But then here we are, over six months later, then it finally gets done.
Well, I, because somebody else was probably getting gravel too, we're putting gravel all.
So you can only do one person at a time in six months?
Well, it's not one person at a time, your road doesn't serve just one person, I mean, that's.
Obviously.
Well, ob- obviously, that's the point, there's several people who said this morning, hey, we got gravel yesterday, same thing.
Last week, Mr. Prelewitz said I should, I should drive a, a four-wheel drive, that's how people get to the road.
Well, it's not a bad suggestion on some things, I mean, two-wheel drive car's difficult to navigate when it's wet, that's not, I mean, you know.
Is the county gonna supply the taxpayers with four-wheel drives like they do to the county superintendent to drive back and forth on paved roads?
No, Troy, he's like.
Why? Why does he get a four-wheel drive to drive back and forth on paved roads for no reason? But the county people are disposed to deal with it.
Well, the argument is that he's not using it for personal use, he's using it to check up parts, he lives in Bismarck, we've already discussed it, that's getting handled.
Why is he still living in Bismarck being in? When you guys also said he had to live in the county.
Well, I don't know if that was an actual mandate you could make on someone, I mean, and the, the question is.
It's been mandated on other people.
Okay, well, then if the commissioners want to enforce that mandate, they certainly can, that's, I mean, that's my.
Aren't you a commissioner?
I, I'm not gonna mandate it, that's my, that's my stance.
You don't care, you can equally live wherever he wants. Again, it goes back to, you are sticking up for, your loyalty lies with Mr. Prelewitz, it does not lie with everybody else. Yes, it does.
It lies with an employee at the county that I feel is doing an adequate job, that's my opinion. That's my opinion.
I have to say one thing and I'll say it, just support what you're saying and nothing against any commissioners, none. I wasn't part of the hiring of Mr. Skylar Prelewitz, none.
I know that.
Yeah, I didn't, nothing to do with it. I came on board December of when was it, of twenty-two? The first meeting, I asked what the agreement was with Mr. Prelewitz. And he was supposed to move down there, I said, he made arrangements to move down to Skylar. I'm working on it, I got, I don't recollect, don't know me to it, but what I'm gonna say. I got a day, Dan, I have to set up an arrangements for an apartment to live here. Okay, all good and done. January I came, but the next meeting I asked him again, directly like I'm talking to you. Have you made arrangements that fell through? I'm working on another deal, would probably take a week, week and a half, okay, overlooked. I come into the February meeting, quote, "There's other people that drive from county to county." And I said, so what, Burley to Morton, Morton to Burley? You told me December and January, now it's this excuse. And I got more or less shut down. And I've been talking to this issue ever since I've been on the board and I'm just gonna say this to you. I'm not in support of this either, not at all. Because I think the agreement was in the minutes with Mr. Prelewitz, this is what he had to comply with and it hasn't happened.
I agree with that, yeah, he got rewarded by getting taken off probation and given a raise. Why? You can speak again, Mr. Magrum, if you want to answer a question.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
The, um, I'm in support of it, just like I supported Francis Crum and just like I supported others.
Francis Crum lived in the county.
Yeah, but Francis Crum lived a distance away too and used the county truck.
In the county.
That's right, well, like I said, I'm not gonna mandate him moving down here, I mean, if that's the case, are we gonna mandate Cody or Cody and him moving from South Florida to North Florida? Because he lives in what, Pollock? I mean, we had David Crum live in McIntosh County, I mean, if you're gonna mandate him living in the county, that's fine, if you want to do that. That, I mean, the commissioners can do it, I, I'm.
So more condoning of his actions, just like I said from the beginning, that's why you should resign.
Well.
You're not looking out for this county, you're looking out for you and Mr. Prelewitz.
Respectfully disagree with that, so. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Remick? Well, if not, I think that's it, Troy, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Next will be the county board park meeting. Andy Rice usually chairs it, he's not here. Somebody want to volunteer to chair, if not, I won't chair it. Nobody wants to volunteer? Okay, so we will recess the county commission meeting. And we will now call the county park board meeting to order. Agenda items for the park board. I have the park board agenda here. Must be underneath my resignation. It's not here neither. Okay, oh, here it is. The agenda. So we've called meeting order, the next will be the approval of the May second, twenty-twenty-three minutes, which you had in your packets. I don't have with me, so. Anybody make a motion to approve the minutes from the May second, twenty-twenty-three meeting for the park board? Motion made by Dean Weiss, is there a second to that motion? Will we want to see the park board minutes? Anyone? Carlene, the second.
Mr. Chairman, she can't, she's just, she's not on the board.
Oh, you're not on the board?
I'm sorry.
Get out.
It's, it's busy.
I thought you were on the Kintyre Park Board, okay.
Well, she is, she's not on the county park board, it's you commissioners, Andy Rice and Dean Weiss.
Oh, okay, so I, I, I was understanding that anybody from the other four boards.
Sorry.
Well, that's mine, mine, I. Again, another reason I'm terrible at my job, okay. Anybody else want to make a motion? You know what, I'll second it, what the heck, I'm breaking all the rules today. So, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye, aye, oppose, minutes approved. Next will be the review of the budget information.
I gave you guys all copies in your packets, but last year the Kintyre's park spent thirty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. Um, I got it all labeled out, distribution was eighteen thousand utilities, twelve hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Maintenance to Langus Lake was sixteen thousand three sixty with maintenance to Rice Lake, approved two hundred thirty dollars. And then other miscellaneous, um, I'm, I'm guessing that was probably the coal papers for toilet paper and probably a few other supplies that Sam had picked up. And then in twenty-twenty-four budget, as you have in front of you, um, one thing that I did notice, I'm gonna have to increase the utilities in the twenty-twenty-five budget because for some reason they've been, they've been going up in price, so. Any questions as far as the budget is going? Year to date, we've spent seventeen hundred and seventy-four dollars of utilities.
And that is mostly because of the disbursements to the other parks, though?
No, this year so far, it's just the Kevin Electric and what we've paid Sam to clean at Rice Lake.
Okay, and that's what this meeting is about then, because you already dispersed funds last year from the meeting from last year.
Right, so this year, you know, in the twenty-twenty-four budget, we have budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for, um, distribution. So you guys can decide today how you want to distribute those dollars.
And I believe last year, you basically just sort of evenly amongst all the parks, right?
Last year, you guys actually went over the distribution budget, you went eighteen thousand.
Okay.
You gave it out, which is fine, um, you just go, you won't go over the park board budget hole if we do that again, which will just be three thousand over that line, I don't know.
Sure.
And maybe twenty-twenty-five budget, when we do that this, maybe we should decide or maybe increase that or not.
Sure. So last year's distribution was eighteen thousand, right? So, didn't, didn't.
You'll see it in the minutes, I have how we distributed it.
Yeah, I see that.
It's eighteen thousand.
Was that in our packets?
Yeah, it did, it did, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I love it, I'm home again, I'm excited, but, it's fine.
So, what is that? Well, I did.
Stay here for a second. Okay.
What you can drink?
So, how much should we give what?
I think everybody got three thousand.
I'll get Alex.
Yeah, I just did for a strawberry.
I thought that one year we went more, it was, it was a little different, wasn't it?
Well, there were, there were years where we did stuff a little bit differently, where some got more and some got less, but some had specific projects. So I guess the first question, does anybody have a specific project or anything that's kind of above the normal? Anything that, you know, a specific request?
I gave you guys all a letter from Anamok from the Kintyre.
Sure, okay. Sure, okay.
Did you have something?
Mrs. Keller, absolutely. Come on.
The guy sitting in front of him wanted to say.
Yeah, her, he can be next up. I seen her man first, sorry.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to represent, uh, Linton Park Board. I am a grant writer and project manager that I work and consult with several communities around the area and work with their park boards. And I'm in helping Linton Park Board. And if you've known or noticed, we got some new playground equipment at the city park, which I got a partial grant for half of, of the cost of that. Uh, we've been working on benches and some additional, um, opportunities at the concession stand, um, which I think is going to help during the quasi-centennial. I've also taken on, um, a big project out at Seaman Park, which is, uh, tree removal. I'm sure all of you realize that a lot of the trees in the area are at the age and disease issues that need to be taken down. So I've successfully gotten some grant money to help with removal and replacement of the trees out at Seaman Park. But that's going to be a very large project phased over several years. And then we've also been working on, they want to put a pickleball court, which would also double as, and for the ice skating rink at the city park. Um, along with some additional work over the next few years on the pool, which needs some updates and may, they're looking at some replacing some of the lining of the pool and putting in a splash pad. So I guess I wanted to have you be aware of what's going on with, um, the Linton Park Board's projects. But also realize that any investment that you choose to make is going to be probably matched by grant money. Um, because I've been fairly successful in getting grant money for, um, them and then the Wishit Park Board and the City of Wishit, and I'm working with Napoleon. So I guess I, I'm here today, I was asked to represent them, um, in asking for whatever you deem equitable, uh, for the type of projects that we're working on. Knowing that several of them will be at least being worked on or even completed for the quasi-centennial. And as a result, they are also talking about a marketing, um, effort in order to be able to really showcase both the city parks amenities and out at Seaman Park. And we have been able to generate more interest in Seaman Park and camping and everything and other events that take place out there over the last couple of years because of that effort. But we need to take care of the trees before we do any more camp spots and update the restrooms and things like that, because that's the priority right now. So I just wanted to be able to share the information with you and, um, whatever you feel you can put into the coffers would be more than likely matched by grant funds. So it's doubling your money. So does anybody have any questions?
So is that just for this year?
This, for the amounts this year? Yeah, I can come back and update you about all the things that can, that happened this, you know, for this year by the next meeting as well. But there, um, there's a plan finally in place. We've discussed it the last, uh, since I was hired in June of last year, um, what they need to have for a long-term plan. Because most of these grants come due and they have a year sometimes before they're actually dispersed for their funding. So they need to have a five-year plan in place. And we are working on that. So a lot of that has to do with, um, finding the money to do the pool, because that will probably be the biggest project. And then out at, at Seaman Park with the tree removal and tree replacement. Um, and then in the future, I'm hoping that they will be doing a lot more at city park as well. Um, I did forget, one of the things that we got grant money for was the concession stand at C, at city park. And that will probably, um, be used, they're putting in some new equipment, water and a sink out there so that, and extra electricity. To be able to, um, really focus on having the, um, types of foods and drinks and that, that people that are there want. But also to open it up possibly for extending the facility for more games and, and activities and stuff as well. So, but yeah, it's definitely, and, and I'm sure you know this, when you start working in parks, there's always maintenance. But then you need a plan for the future as well.
Does the profits from the concession stand go back into the park then?
Actually, they go and they help with the, um, baseball program.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we do have a new person that's working on, on helping organize that and, and that type of thing since Dwayne passed away, so.
So it's not just operating out of even?
No, no, no. Their plan is, is to be able to.
Raise funds for the.
Raise funds for the park and, and for the baseball field as well, yeah.
So if the county gave more this year, so you get a matching grant for it, any, would you take less next year?
Possibly, yes. I mean, I'm hoping that by then we'll have more in grant funds for their projects. But unfortunately, because the timing of a lot of the grants that I write, I, like, say it closes in June and they, they review it and they approve it. But they don't actually disperse it until like sometimes six months later. And you can't start working on the project until that next spring. So. Does anybody else have any questions?
So the guy, like I said, if a guy gave more this year, the next year give less, that's.
Yeah. Not that I won't be here asking, but.
Well, we gotta be fair to everybody.
Yeah, and I understand that. They all have those needs, absolutely.
I, I, excuse me, I do have one question. Do you have estimates on, on the cost factor of these different various projects?
Yes.
It's easier to say what you may contribute when you have a estimate of what the expenses may be.
I don't have it on the pool yet. That's, cause that is an ongoing project. But, um, the cost for, as an example, the cost for the playground equipment was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So I got them eighty thousand dollars in grant funds. And I do have to have all of the estimates before I complete the grant, because you have to have justification for what, you know, you're asking for the grant funds as well. And some of the grant funds are fifty percent match, some of them are twenty percent match, and some of them, if I'm lucky, if I find them, are not a match at all to it. So it's all grant funds that, that go into the project. But so far out at Seaman Park, phase one is the one section of the park that's kind of across Bernie Restrooms, across the creek. And there were thirty-plus trees that need to be taken down out there. And so, um, the estimate for that was over sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that's for tree removal and stump grinding and then replacement of the trees. And I so far got almost thirty thousand dollars in, in grant funds. But that's just that little portion there. And look at the rest of the park, twenty acres, there's a lot of trees. So I will be working with the North Dakota Forest Service in order to hopefully secure additional funds for that. So.
All right, well, we should probably move on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Herman?
I just wanna, pretty much, I, I agree with Mr. Remick a hundred and ten percent. It's terrible out there. Yesterday, I took me three runs and I got a four-wheel drive to get up there. Which you should not be up to, have to call the commissioners, get that road done. The county shop is right there. I see no air plow on that road than I've ever seen in fifteen years I've lived there. And it's, the other day, they, they bladed the road one way and then the other way. And they left, they bladed all the gravel over on the west shoulder. Half hour later or later that morning, I saw two air plows wings out. Why wouldn't they bring that gravel over and put it on their own? That night it rained. And there's trucks up there. I, the other day I was working in my shop and there's a truck that come up that hauls tires. I would hear he drives the tires out. Why come up that road? He took three runs. There was another semi down there waiting for you to get up the road. Why do they have to drive up there? When I moved out there fifteen years ago, we had about ten, twenty cars a day. Now we got fifty. And that road's being used. That road is so ripply going up there, you should not have to be told to blade that road. Drop that blade just for, just for up the hill. The rest of the road had broken yesterday. It's not bad. But up that hill, there's a lot of traffic and tr, trucks that should not be out there. They don't wanna go through town, so they go there. And it's, and I think that speed on that in the summertime, you can't even open whatever window, it's cause it's so dusty. They're going seventy miles an hour. On Wednesday night, when there's, when there's golf cars going up there, they're going sixty, seventy miles an hour to get that five o'clock, get through the golf course. I don't, I'm not saying that, but.
No, I, I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna interrupt you, but we're in the park board meeting. I, I thought you had something to contribute to the park board. You're more than welcome to speak.
I shouldn't have it in when we're.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I guess I thought you were speaking for the parks. So you're more than welcome to stay and we can talk about it afterwards, or we should get the park business.
No, I think Mr. Remick pretty much covered everything.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I appreciate you speaking. I, I'm sorry, I, I guess I didn't realize your road issue.
I'm sorry, I'm hot.
No, no, that's, you're fine, Herman.
I would, see, go out there and take, I wish I should have taken a picture of that road this morning. It's absolutely terrible.
Sure. No, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Herman, I'm sorry.
And that's the way to load it, kind of.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add with the park budget?
As an alderman from the city of Linton, I would just like to ask this commission and a grandparent to, to, to squeeze the turnip a little bit when it comes to the park board. It's so nice to get our kids off of iPads and off of the TV and off of the phone and out to parks. You guys should be trying to raise the budget as much as you possibly can and get these kids, uh, every park in every town should have nice equipment for these kids. I'd love to see my grandkids on this new equipment down here in Linton. They just love it. And we need to be trying to get kids out of the house as much as we possibly can. Park equipment is extremely, extremely important right now, cause our kids are stuck in a rut on a TV or an iPad. And we need to do everything we can to give them good equipment. I know I spent my summers in Wishit playing basketball at the basketball court. Lynn's basketball court is horrible. You know, I mean, that's, you guys need to try your hardest to give every park board as much money as you possibly can, in my opinion.
Well, I think the intent of this distribution more than anything was probably to just help kind of cover the maintenance costs, so we can keep the lights on in the grass mode in the hopes that relieving that burden will allow them to hopefully pay for other things. Obviously, I mean, park, park equipment is expensive. That's no, I mean, every time you see a fundraiser, it, it's never forty thousand dollars for a slide setup. It's always forty, fifty, a hundred, it's, it's a lot of money. And, uh, so I, I don't think the intent of the county park board budget is, is probably, I think we entertained the idea years ago where it's like, hey, does somebody really have something? They just absolutely would really need help getting done. Maybe we could shift some funds. It, it kind of almost seems like, in a lot of ways, the best thing to do is almost equally distributed, so everybody can just keep their parks the shape they're in. They gotta be fundraisers to improve them, that's kind, you know, cause we were talking about fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars, even in the grand scheme of things, if we gave eighteen grand to one park, it's obviously a drop in the bucket for some of these bigger projects. I would almost rather see everybody get enough to just, like we discussed, MDU, Chem, water bills, everything's going up. At least we can help so they can keep their grass green and their stuff mowed, but. It's kind of the intent, I'm not saying we probably couldn't do more, but I, I think the intent has always been to just give a little help so we can keep everything cleaned up. Just, you know, help out a little bit, uh.
I would, I would think that you're right there, kind of, like, Linton out there can get a matching grant, you know? We give a little more this year than next year, not as much, I don't know, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I mean, how can, how much can we give?
Well, we, essentially, we got fifteen thousand.
Can we give any other questions?
You guys gotta keep in mind, this county park, and I hate to, this county park was put, it, it used to be a separate mill levy for our county park. Our county park was Langley's Bay. That is why we even have this fund, is because our county park is Langley's Bay. And that's why we have this meeting once a year. And what the commissioners have done in the past is save a little bit extra in the county park fund to distribute just to some cities.
City park.
But the county park is not supposed to be operating with the city park. That's not what it was intended for. It's our county park is Langley's Bay. And so that's why, you know, the majority of the budget is because of us, is Langley's Bay. And then we've taken on Rice Lake then.
Thank you, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the cities have their own budget for the parks. Um, they can write their own grants, it's, whatever, but the county park budget was not intended to.
Support city park.
To support city park. We, we do budget distribution, which has been done for years and years. And we put in there like fifteen thousand dollars to. I just wanna.
Basically, I appreciate, I did not know.
We're, we're letting, essentially, we levy fifteen thousand dollars to distribute to local parks as we see fit.
And the county park used to have its own mill levy, but in two thousand and fifteen, legislators consolidated it into the general fund. So no, I just budgeted so much in the general fund, cause that mill levy went away.
To be clear though, I mean, we are, we are funding our obligations at Langley's and stuff. I mean, up short of a paving project or something, we are, I mean, that's where like when we pay Sam Renshler.
Right.
That comes out of mostly the park funds unless there's some other discretionary stuff. But there, most of that stuff, when we, you know, fix up one of the portpods or do any of those other things out of our pocket, that comes from the park budget. And then also from any assistance from game and fish, Corps of Engineers, whatever. So the distribution part was kind of an increase to the mill years ago, where they said, well, we'll increase it a little and be able to distribute some. Because my assumption is, is years ago, some counties were coming, or some city parks were coming to the county going, hey, could we get a little bit of help? Right, and so the, the process started where even though the distribution or that mill levy isn't specifically intended for the city parks, they did increase it with the intent of distributing it to the cities in, in small increments to help out with things like maintenance and projects. So.
That was Hague, Strasburg, Linton, Braddock and Tintyre?
Well, there's.
Yeah.
So we get three grand each one.
So we are under no obligation to distribute any funds, but yet at the same time, the increase to the mill was with the intent to distribute some city funds.
No, we didn't have it in the budget. We appropriated fifteen thousand.
Exactly, so, I mean, I guess the question more and more than is, if you're not gonna distribute any funds, you should almost consider lowering the mill levy on that basis. Or if you're gonna keep milling, then you should distribute it that way. And then how you distribute it was, it was almost easier to just give everybody the same amount and go, hey, use it to cut the grass, keep the lights on and the water. And that way, we're not picking favorites over who gets a gym set, who does, you know, just because Kintyre has seven people living in town doesn't make their park any less important than Kintyre. And so, you know, if they wanna jungle gym in Linton, that's why you should theoretically give it to Linton, cause they have more people in the ice park. But they also have more resources, people looking at getting grants, the likelihood of getting grants because of their city. I mean, so you could actually say you should give more money to the smaller ones, cause they don't quite have the resources. So a couple of years ago, especially last year, was where I was in favor of just going, the easiest thing to do is just cut the pond even pieces and, and let them pay for the lights and water and the grass mowing, and they can sort out their projects themselves. But I will say, the reason I asked about the projects, is we talked about that years ago too, where it's like, hey, somebody really had just an absolute slam dunk of a project and it's like, we could go one year, but you gotta make sure you're trying to be equitable. Like you said, you, you give Linton more, in theory, you should remember that and try and give one of the other ones.
That's why I say if we happen to get double this, double this year, next year it would be nothing. I mean, but.
Well, and that's the kind of, you know, you would have to try and, you know, keep it equitable, cause like you said, you could get in the trap of where you're giving someone more all the time, because, well, they have the nicer park. Well, that's not fair to the other ones too. If you're doing an equitable distribution with county funds, it almost seems like the easiest way to do is get everybody to, let's face it, two to three thousand dollars. It, it might be more than one part.
That's why I was wondering, we can't go more than the fifteen or eighteen thousand.
Well, if we do, we're shorting our obligations to things like Langley's and Rice Lake. That's, I mean, we could give it all to them. I think there's a thirty-something, about forty-seven thousand in there, but you're not gonna have enough to pay Sam to do the garbage and the other things that we're already committed to with the other parks, so. That's the trouble.
So are we about three thousand dollars each?
Yeah, cause I believe there was.
That came to eighteen thousand.
Well, what it is, is there's six distributions, because there's Hazelton, Braddock, Kintyre, and then Strasburg or Linton has two, right? Because there's a project fund and another like a, or do they, cause they have that split up, there's six of them.
We, we usually just give, um, Linton Park and they split, they deal with it.
Right.
Whatever they, you know, whatever they want to do with Seaman Park, that's up to them. And then Strasburg, because Strasburg has two separate parts of the Seaman Park expansion, we give them, we cut it in half. Like we give Linton three thousand, we would give each one of those fifteen.
Right, so that, that each town essentially got it, right?
Each town got three thousand dollars.
Yeah. So that's where, when you have the, that's, it just seems like the easiest and fairest way to do it. And, cause we're always hating and it's like, wow, just because two towns wanna put a jungle gym up, now we're picking whose one is the one worth doing. Well, that's, it'd be, it'd be different if we were talking about a hundred thousand dollars, or you're talking about an amount of money that's probably not gonna make a huge effect, but it does probably help. Well, it helps upgrade a lawnmower or, or like you said, pay the light bill. And, and in the end, as a county, I feel like if we're taking on the duty of maintaining parts, it should be for the current maintenance and just keeping the day-to-day going. Improvements after that, that's why you have your local park boards in your local cities and they should be contributing to the major expenditures. That's, that's my opinion. Obviously, not everybody agrees with it.
Well, not that I don't agree.
No, I wasn't supposed to talk about you, but anyway, yeah.
No, I didn't wanna take away from giving other parks, I just thought we could. No, I didn't want to take away from giving other parks, I just thought we could add it more.
Well, I just thought if she could get, if we gave her six thousand dollars, she could get a six thousand dollar grant, you know, for this.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Next year she gets nothing, you know what I mean, they get nothing, but I don't know if that's possible.
Well, and we, we did that in the past, this episode, go ahead.
If you, if you start doing that, then, then that should be put in the minutes.
Absolutely.
So that, because you might not be on the board next year.
Right, right.
None of you might be on the board next year, and then it's, that's all gonna get lost.
Yeah.
So, if you do something like that, there needs to be a record that's gonna stay here. It's, it's a motion.
Oh, no, and we've done that, there, there were times where some were getting more and less, like Lyton, when I first came on, Lyton even Strasburg and Hazelton kind of got a little more than Kintyre and Braddock. And my assertion was almost in a way, Kintyre and Braddock almost need our distribution more because they have less people, less revenue sources, less opportunities, that so if you want to actually be equitable, in a way, we were almost maybe doing it backwards, but the idea was, well, they probably have more of use their park, it's a bigger park, they're, they're doing more, so we try to give more money. That all depends on the philosophy of the board. You have a few people that support one park over the other, the idea one or the other, then that's what you start seeing, so, I, I'm up for any motions or discussions, I'm just trying to clarify, because I've been a part of this now for like six years and we did it one way at the beginning, we've kind of gotten equitable the last couple of years. I don't know if any of those ways is any better or worse, but the equitable part definitely, yeah. It just made it simpler, I guess, so, unless anybody's got a reason not to advocate that, but, Mrs. Scout?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to suggest that possibly in the future, because I know people may not be prepared today, but it might benefit the commissioners if you had an actual park board report prior to your meeting, your annual meeting, so that you knew what was actually going on in all of the parks, so you had a better idea of, you know, what is actually happening.
Well, I think we kind of, we kind of a loose report, like Ann Mock had sent a letter with Kintyre, I, I think for the most part, uh, Mrs. Rambley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of times with even like Braddock and Kintyre, the main thing is they just want help just, just keeping what they have in a lot of, I mean, that not that they wouldn't love improvements, but the main thing is, is they just appreciate the fifteen hundred to two to three thousand bucks just to keep the lights on and the doors open, kind of, and that's, and that's where I kind of adopted the mentality later on where it's like, you obviously have a lot going on with Lyton, which is great, and, and you have probably more community support because of the size of your town. That shouldn't be a detriment, but at the same time, it's like, it's easier to just go, well, here you go, we're taking care of some just minimal cost for you so you can focus more on trying to improve the park, and for some people, that's, you know, three thousand bucks to the Lyton parks, kind of not a big deal when you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars improvements. To Braddock and Kintyre, three thousand bucks is what keeps their park rolling for the summer, you know, and it's such a big deal to some of the parks and to others, it's just welcome assistance, but you know, more active park boards, more fundraisers, more opportunities they have, they tend to just take it and run, I mean, and Hazelton's kind of in the middle, where the bigger Braddock and Kintyre, and the smaller Lyton, so they got some things a little better and some things are worse, and it
Basically, basically at Hazelton, while they did put in a new, uh, new, uh, playground equipment, it was last year they did that. So, they, they spent pretty much all their money that they had for that project, and, um, so, yeah, they're just looking for something to mow the lawn and pay the light bill and um, I appreciate Lyton's got all these projects going, um, but at the same time, you gotta kind of be fair that all parks, everybody, um, in my opinion.
I guess I would like to see a spring summer poll report, just to keep up on what's going on.
Yeah, and it's nice when, when the people do write a, a letter to guys to let them know what's, what's going on. I have suggested that to the Hazelton people in the past and they evidently didn't do it this year, I didn't mention it till this year, but, um, it's like everything else, the people on the board and you guys are, you know, they're, they're there on a volunteer basis and and, uh, so it's not always a problem for everyone.
Not everybody's happy with everybody's service either, so that's always tough, so.
Right, right.
I just, I just keep everyone's thoughts, but, uh, yeah, no, I, again, I would just like to reiterate, I think the county's position on the parks is just to try and maintain what we have. I mean, I just, I just believe that the way we're doing it is probably the easiest way you can do it.
I would make a motion though, just to keep it all the same, pay them all the same.
So, your motion would be to distribute three thousand dollars to, to each entity?
Why you?
So, we have a motion and a second to do the three thousand dollar distributions to the entities, now we're in discussion.
Is that Strasburg one getting split up then again, or what?
Basically, you'd be just doing the same thing as last year.
Was it three thousand or two?
Okay, well, if you, it's three thousand, as we did last year, but then that, would that total be eighteen thousand, right, or, because the way we did it?
We did the same thing last year.
Right, so basically just doing the same thing, okay. And that three thousand over on the distribution, it's just coming from a different part of our fund, I mean, we have the money, it's not like we're going over in a sense, okay. So, the total distribution would be eighteen thousand with three thousand be distributed equity, equitatively to each entity, that's, that's fair motion, we have a motion and a second on that, is there any more discussion? From anyone? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Distribution and the budget is done, next item on the agenda will be the Langler's Bay discussion, is Rice Lake in a similar discussion, or?
What's going on with the water out there?
I haven't been able to get out there, because every time I was gonna go out there, it rains. My intent is to talk to the current landowner of that property, because the situation is, is that the water from Langler's Bay is tied on to the well of the homeowner next to Langler's Bay, which used to be Dale Davis, there was a handshake agreement with the county that has always operated that way. I, I don't, I don't know, nobody's spoken to it now that it's changed ownership. We should, and, you know, we should probably not do things like the old way and probably get some kind of a written agreement that just states that, you know, maybe there's some kind of cost share in that, maybe we offer some maintenance, because I don't think it's fair that that person literally maintains that well with their own property and then the obviously Dale was a big fisherman down there, he liked the idea of water down there and he was more than willing to grant it, great. I actually don't, I got texted the number, but I don't even know if I remember the name, but it's, uh, I, my plan was is that I was gonna be working in the Catzell Bay area a couple of different times, I was gonna go down there and check the well, because the reason why we're talking about it is that the water
The water where they clean the fish, there's no water.
It's not working, so something's going.
The fishermen are coming, going fishing and running.
Also that the water isn't going.
There's no water at Langler's Bay Fish Landing Station, they're hooked up right now, and so.
We talked about, didn't we talk about piping the water?
Well, the discussion we had a few times was separating the piping, well, if you do real water, water well or anything, you're probably talking a minimum of twenty to thirty thousand dollars to get water to Langler's Bay, so that's the reason why, it was probably discussed with the neighbor, it worked out and it was all fine, but I have no idea if this friend neighbor is willing to work with us the way Dale did and
So, we don't know if he turned it off or what?
No idea.
Well, I, I don't think he did anything, I think it's more, there, there could be something wrong with the pump or
Yeah, well, the assumption, the assumption is there's probably something wrong with the pump, the other thing is, I don't know if this person works at full time, so I don't even know if they're aware if it worked, I, I don't know, I I guess every time I was, I wanted, I didn't want to just give a phone call, I wanted to go in person, I did talk to KJ Moser, who kind of knows him and said that he would, and I think Sam said too, that he talked to the guy or knows him.
You know, my, my phone started ringing, you guys have the dock out there, yeah, we have the dock out there, and they go out there and now the water don't work, so they're mad.
Right, and I, I mean
The fishermen want water.
No offense to anybody, but water at Langler's Bay is, if I had a list of a hundred things on my list, it'd probably be list number one oh one, so I'm not overly concerned, I'm sorry, I, I got bigger fish to fry, no pun intended. Then the cleaning station at Langler's Bay, the dock is in, they can use it, if there's no water, I'm sorry, and I, I plan on going down there, is, you know, every time I was gonna go down there, my plans changed because of the rain, I wanted to go and talk to this person in person, see if we can reach some kind of agreement and figure out what's going on, that's what's going on with Langler's Bay. If anybody else wants to volunteer to do it, I'm more than happy with allowing you to do that too, if you want to take a drive or make a phone call, I can forward you the phone number. If not, I had offered to handle Lyton Marlis and Sam contacted me. If not, the other discussion would be Rice Lake.
I don't have anything I thought.
Does anybody have anything to discuss about Rice Lake?
Do you ever call that, um, Van Beek gentleman?
Oh, no idea. As far as the Strasburg Wildlife?
Well, I sent him a letter and they don't respond to it.
He didn't respond.
Am I sending it to the French person, is he still present?
Still, Van Beek, isn't he?
Strasburg Wildlife? Kintyre? Okay, so there's no updates for Rice Lake? Well, that being all the agenda items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Emmens County Park Board meeting. The motion to adjourn meeting? I don't, yeah, it's only Dean, I guess, otherwise the commissioner, so, Dean makes the motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Maturi, County Park Board meeting is hereby adjourned. Thanks for attending, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We will now reconvene, Emmens County Commission meeting. Next item on the agenda will be a staffing update by Kajah.
Hello. Just, um, real quickly, wanted to give you a little update, a few changes in our office, Ashley Prowse resigned her position, um, so her last day was Friday. She had an opportunity, she couldn't pass up, so we're happy for her, but we're sad for our office. Um, currently have it posted, Plan Beak can screen on May ninth, have several applicants, so hopeful that we'll fill that position soon. Um, as far as the Ag and National Resource position, it is still open, um, had some really good conversations with somebody that I think would be an amazing fit. Um, so hoping to see their application come through soon, um, I know we had maybe some other applicants online, um, that, uh, they're, they're being screened right now before the process to, to see if, um, they meet all the requirements to, so. Um, any questions, just wanted to this all happened after the last meeting, so I couldn't give an update when I gave my quarterly report, so.
Any cross checks for a new extension agent?
That's what I was talking about, sorry, the Ag agent, yeah, I've been having some really good conversations with somebody that I think would be an amazing fit. But they gotta go through the process, so hopefully as a hiring committee member, you'll hear from me soon on that.
So, who fills in until somebody gets somebody?
It is.
You're looking at it, yes.
So, thankfully Connie Jobe, sweetest lady at her rate, um, is coming in a little bit right now, just helping with a few things because Achievement Days is just around the corner, so summer is a crazy time for us, so we're getting all of our Achievement Day stuff mailed and stuff out, so Connie is helping me out a little bit, of course, she retired, so she doesn't want to have, um, set hours that are permanent work, so, but she's helping to try to limp along, hopefully we'll get that, um, administrative assistant position filled, and it's gonna be a tough summer because it's gonna be, even if we hire everybody, it's a lot of training, but gotta do what you gotta do, so.
You are getting some assistance probably from the neighboring Extension Office, as far as questions, things like maybe that are outside of your
I mean, we, I work a lot with like specialists to answer questions and stuff like that, and some of the agents.
I mean, so you are getting some fill-in help probably on some things, at least from the neighboring counties, I mean, not probably not what you need, but
Yeah, I mean, more just maybe an answer. But, you know, not sending in the soil samples or taking pictures, you know, horticulture is just around the corner, so we get lots of trees and tomatoes, questions in the horizon and probably insects, but rain is good, right, so hopefully we won't have a summer of water samples. But, I'll just keep you guys updated, um, if I have any changes in the office, I will be back next month to report on them.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Anybody have any other questions for Kajah?
No.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
This will be Skyler Prowlitz at County Road Department.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning, Skyler.
Just the old one, has to go tomorrow, it's the most
Um, we got John with Old Engineering, you guys want to bring him up right away, we got talking about some funding and stuff like that. You can get out. I don't think there's anything in your packet about the funding right now, so this is coming up. So, we got submitted for some of that funding for Seventeenth Avenue and Sanger's, Sanger Lake, that culvert extension, so I'll let John talk about the requirements and what's, what that's all about, so.
So, I'll probably start with Sanger Lake, um, we put in an application and that applicant, application included the construction engineering for the project as well as the twenty percent local county match, um, and they approved both of those. So, those are gonna be reimbursable funds, um, we'll send the county a bill and then you'll get reimbursed for it. And that project is getting bid on Friday, so we'll know a total cost. So, if the cost, construction cost comes over what I estimated, there could be a minimal amount of extra dollars the county's gonna have to afford just to manage it. Any questions regarding that project?
That's Sanger Lake?
Sanger Lake, yep, and that's just a culvert replacement.
Yeah, because I had a phone call yesterday, they said that it was closed and was wondering who got the bid, and I said, I have no idea, I haven't heard a word.
No, it's, it got pushed back a month.
Okay.
Is that bidding here then, or just?
No, it's through the DOT.
Through the DOT?
Yep.
Since that's a federal labor
It's a federal labor.
Both your local governor, right?
Yep, yep.
Seventeenth Avenue. You guys are trying to get out of here, you're not gonna get out of here, so.
And I've got contracts for both of these projects too, if you want us to, um, move forward. The construction engineering portion for the Sanger Lake, um, that's all gonna be, uh, flex funding, so that won't actually cost the county anything. Um, and then, yeah, if you want to move on to, um, Seventeenth Avenue project, you were awarded funding for it for the preliminary engineering, um, from the DOT.
What percentage of that?
So, it's all flex funding, it's not, the county's not gonna have to pay for any of it.
Okay.
For preliminary engineering, that's how we wrote up the contract. Obviously, construction that hasn't been awarded yet, where the hope is, maybe this next year they're gonna ask for more, um, projects. Um, we would resubmit for this project, and what we've been told is since we were awarded preliminary engineering on this, this would be at the top of the list for next year to get the construction awarded as well. I mean, it's not a guarantee, but
It's, it's staying good news that you get a preliminary engineering, because that means you probably are, been in the shortlist of qualifiers for flex funding for the construction of it, then.
Yep.
The reason why they gave you preliminary engineering is they're hoping like, hey, that's a project we're doing, so it's a good sign.
Yep, because we did put in for construction, they just didn't give us that money, yep.
And so, because I, I called Mike Rovinius yesterday, because I was, I was getting people asking about Seventeenth Avenue, so the anticipation or the plan is to somehow come up with like a temporary band-aid, some way to slightly grade raise it, maybe reinforce it with GeoGrid or something. Or you guys are kind of working on an idea to basically improve it short-term so that way we can get to the point where we can do a permanent grade raise, that's, that's the goal of the construction funding, is to do a permanent grade raise, right?
Yes, so none of this would fund the temporary grade raise right now.
And so, what you guys are trying to, well, Mike basically explained to me is he's trying to figure out the best way to do it, but also not spend a bunch of money, because everything we put on that road is probably gonna be tore out in a year, hopefully. If everything goes the way we want it, a year from now, we're tearing out whatever we put on it, so the intention was, was to try and find something that works, but not not go dump two hundred thousand dollars into it just to tear it all out a year, year and a half from now, so. But, I mean, is that fair?
Yeah, excuse me, um, yeah, we were actually up there yesterday with a different, um, ten star, it's that GeoGrid fabric that we put, we put on a few roads, um, that's pretty much, that and cement stabilization is our, probably our two, two only options we have. Talking with, I guess Old was talking with Strata, Strata went up there and looked at it today. They're kind of concerned with the water being so close that cement stabilization might not be, it might not work that, the best. And then, if we do GeoGrid, then we could use, probably have to use county forces. The only upfront cost would be the, the fabric itself, um, and then, you know, we'd have to put gravel over the top, which we've we've already mined the gravel, we have the gravel there, it's just the manpower and the time to put it on there, so.
Well, you're probably gonna have to do some type of riprock, I suppose, right, because I mean with gravel, with action, I mean
We're coming up about a foot.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, we'd have to probably do, put something on the edge there, so.
Something, I mean.
How close is the water to the riprock?
In one spot, it's coming over, it's touching the shoulders and then, you know.
Well, with this rain, it probably was.
Right, like, yes, we were up there yesterday with them and there was spots where it was touching the shoulders of the road, right. the shoulders of the road, right? Kinda looked like it was in the middle of the road, but sometimes that could've been the rain sitting there too. I mean, it's very, very saturated material there, and it's, it's... It's time to do something, but you're right, what do we do? Do we try to put a, I mean, no matter what option we go with, it's gonna cost a little bit of money, so, and potentially have to salvage, try to salvage some of the material that we put on there, whenever they do decide to fund, if they decide to fund this road, so. And then in your packet, you see that there's a letter now from, oh, the Emergency Services, got a email there, I just received it this morning, so not sure what that, all entitled, I know Gary responded to it, Sheriff Sanders responded to it. Think that was, was that the Emergency Services asking if there's any funding for private drives? Is that what?
I don't know that it was a request for funding, other than that the reporting party had called somebody to get on the escape site, asking about their road being... Again, my response was basically, county's aware of it, commissioner's aware of it, Benegrass, there's a reluctance to, to do that, because it's basically a driveway.
Right, so just to refresh you, there's a private driveway that goes underwater now, and it's, it's underwater again. I'm sure you're all aware of, aware of it, so. And then, if we even come up a foot, if our grade raised, it's gonna, I mean, whole thing's gotta come up another foot, and if it doesn't rain again, it'll be all right, but potentially has a foot to go a foot higher on a driveway, so.
So it's 100 feet?
Well, the whole width of that water's low essentially there, so.
It goes in, let's say, 600 feet?
Well, like, right now it's probably under water, maybe 100 or a little more, as it gets higher, it's just obviously going, 'cause there's a, there's a dip in that road, and that's the spot that the water goes under first, and then obviously, I mean, I mean, that was the main concern that even wanting to go out and do anything before, this thing doesn't spill, so if you build the road up, it's a dam, so.
It's a dam.
So you're gonna be building any other road or inundating any other acres around it every... You raise it an inch, the water's gonna come up an inch, unless it dries out, or you pump it out, or, you know, it's the only other thing to do is probably advocate for the idea we thought about before, see if we can partner some kind of a mini grade raise with some kind of a pumping project, see if we can gain a foot and then lower it six inches, maybe try and dig some ground. I mean, I can tell you one thing, the higher that water is, the more expensive that grade raise is gonna be too, in the future, you know, if somebody comes in and has to raise that thing four feet, the lower the water is, cheaper that bid's gonna be, so.
So how far do you have to go to get done?
Undetermined, yet, I mean... We haven't really dug into that, 'cause that's, you know, when the contractor, whoever would be awarded, that's their, it's their...
How do they get out, can they get out yet?
She has to go through the cornfield when that's flooded, to get out. So maybe she needs an ambulance, her husband's turning a hundred this year.
Right?
Yeah.
That whole stretch right there, kinda where Josh's arrow is in, is, is lower, you can't quite see it, but essentially where the water starts, that's all lower till you get to the, where the field starts again, that's where the elevation changes, so that whole path is basically in and out of water, depending on the height of the water, that whole stretch. Once, like, this tree and right off the road usually isn't underwater either, it's noticeably different if you're out there. Right after this, like, set of trees here, then that's where it dips down, probably a foot, maybe more.
Doesn't run out either way, no.
No, there's just, there's equalizing culverts in all them roads, just to keep everything from going over the road, that's all it is, so even there...
So the water keep filling up, there's no place for it to go.
It's, it's, that's the bottom of the, that's the drainage, that's where everything else drains too. So even pumping it, the only avenue that I found when we explored it before would be, you'd have to probably cut a pipe in the road, somewhere at that intersection, right there, and that waterway does provide some relief elevation-wise, but then that thing has to fill up. Basically, you can see the outline of the trees.
Oh, yeah.
That has to fill up and inundate that pasture until it finally spills, and eventually it gets to Apple Creek and Long Lake and all those things, but, I mean...
A lot of these lakes can fill in with silt, because they're backed up.
Yeah.
And then you create a berm, and this berm gets higher and higher and higher, and man, created a lot of this problem with roads. I mean, the infrastructure, it's a dam, and the water will move, and it's gonna splash the sediment up and create a berm, so it can't drain no more.
A lot of you guys are familiar, this is very similar to Strasburg Slough. You have to pump it like a half mile to get it to drain where you're not flooding somebody.
I got the same at my place.
That's the problem with this damn thing, there's no, ah, we'll just cut a trench 150 feet to that, but you can't, there's nowhere to go, that's where it goes.
Then you gotta duck some limit, you can't do it. They let you go in when you're inundated with water, well, you can't get in to drain it, correct? And then they want you to reclaim it back to where it originally was, well, it doesn't even make sense, but that's their approach.
Well, that landowner's probably gonna be happy if you're draining water on this land.
Exactly, well, and like I said, I know the Silvernacles, James and Cory are the ones that own that land. James didn't say no, but he wasn't an ecstatic yes. I think he just understood that the neighbors need some help, but he was like, yeah, I mean, I suppose it could take some water, which was slang for, do you really have to pump water on the pavement? Exactly, exactly, and then like you said, at what point are, is there some responsibility of the county for inundated acres, you know, it, it creates a lot of mess, there's no easy solution, and that's why it's so hard, and that's why it's taking so long, 'cause...
Can you look at old topography maps, to see what the elevations were on the initial, the, the normal natural spill, what they were at one time?
I know we did kind of a hydrology study as a part of this, I think probably a year ago.
Yeah, I roughly kinda figured out the overtopping elevation. The water potentially could get, at the worst, two feet higher than the lowest point of the road now, before it's gonna naturally...
Yep, yep.
Right. So, I mean, right, there's no guarantee that we raise it a foot here in a month when it finally, hopefully dries out, and that thing don't overtop again, and that's... I'm not advocating for not doing nothing, I'm just reminding everybody too, that like, oh, you go out and build it up a foot, that might solve it, and hopefully it would, but if it keeps raining, if we keep having this situation where we're getting rain like this, it could overtop again.
There's no other way to, for them to get out, to lay the spot for that, no way.
There was a quarter...
Or you'd have to go through the field or something, 'cause there's really hardly any section lines around there too, 'cause the same deal, it's a pothole region up there, there's, there's a lot of, you know...
And that's hurt that driveway, or driveway isn't even on a section line, that's what, a quarter line, or a half mile, so it was one of those back in the day handshake deals, and they punched it in, and...
Well, I did have, I had Kathy look into it at the Recorder's Office, the only thing we found was an easement, and that was not, had nothing to do with the county, that was with landowners allowing, well, at that time the Coondes, which is Judy Carlson's in-law, or that was her maiden name, that was the Coonda Farm, to my knowledge.
Okay.
And there's a, I think it's only a 50-foot easement or something like that, and there was the only thing that was recorded, so if there's, like, some of that we looked into, like, in the past year, like, something like that, Vogels out there was one, where the county actually moved the section, they created a half line as the section line, 'cause the other one wasn't visible, that was reported, that's public right of way, this one just is an easement, we do particles, so.
These two lakes, wouldn't they naturally join from the right to the left? This other lake that you've got up here on the board, don't they join down here to the, into these next two quarters? Because they both got snake necks coming down, that's the point where they're gonna drain out on.
No, it goes to the southwest. That one doesn't, I think that other one to the east, or right, I'm pretty sure that goes to the northeast.
It does.
Yeah, those are separate basins.
Okay.
Well, and they're all about the same elevation, which is the trouble, it's not like one's in a higher or lower spot, where you can drain one into the other, and...
It, it's weird, this one looks like it's a very small drainage basin.
Huh, it looks like it drains just this way and this way.
Well, but if you look at those topography lines, it's not all the way around, there's like 19, 19, it's 10, 20 feet higher all the way around there. It's deceiving, 'cause it looks like a big flat area, but you actually look at the topography, those are the cereal bowls, that's where it drains, you know, that's the trouble. They're potholes, they're not, they're not drainages really, they're the end of the line.
But they're potholes.
So, I guess moving forward with it, or the idea is, is, I mean, I would say, come up with the most feasible way to do it, like, not, I mean, obviously we don't wanna spend a pile of money, but we're not gonna, we, we gotta fix this road, or at least get it drivable and hopeless in driving conditions, right, and so...
I mean, I think we have some rough engineer's estimates on the cement stabilization and the, roughly it would be about 175,000 to...
Cement stabilize?
About 176, just round up to 176,000 to cement stabilize it. If we adjust the GeoGrid, it's 51,000.
And then we install...
And then we install it, we haul the gravel in, we bring it up the foot, and that would be using county forces.
And, and that's the most expensive GeoGrid, I think we could cut back.
No, they're still running the numbers that we were up there...
That's the most expensive GeoGrade fabric?
Yep.
Okay. So we'd wanna cut back on that fabric cost?
I, I think so, yeah.
'Cause it's temporary.
Yeah.
It's a Band-Aid.
Well, I, I think the cement stabilization probably causes you another problem later, is when you have to tear it out again, like...
Well, that would stay in place.
And you'd build over the top.
We'd just build over the top.
Okay.
'Cause you're never gonna remove it and salvage it no more.
Only, there's gotta be a pipe in there somewhere, and we probably will never find it, but we gotta put a new pipe in during construction eventually, a longer pipe, so we'll have to cut through whatever we do.
So the cement stabilization would stay though, so you wouldn't actually be down winging that out, so...
Except in that pipe area.
Right, okay, but I mean, if, so 95% of it's gonna stay, except where you're gonna cut pipe to get through.
Yeah.
But that is improving technology of the stabilization of cement. You're better off going with the fabric and the gravel, you're not?
Not necessarily.
Let's just GeoGrade on that wet spot there, that's not the whole thing, right?
It's about 3,000 feet.
Okay.
So it's pretty much from, there's a soft shoulder sign up there, and then there's a small little section that comes out, but we would just, starting to get a soft squat in there too, so we just...
The GeoGrid would probably have to come out, or would you go on top?
That would stay.
Right, we would need that too.
Right, but then, but I mean, that's where, so, I guess I'm confused, 'cause I was told that whatever we put on there, we're gonna have to take off, so we just restrict the gravel then.
We try to reclaim some of the gravel.
Right, and if you can reclaim half or better of that, maybe hopefully, you're gonna leave the GeoGrid or the concrete, and that, see, that's where, like I said, when I was talking to Mike, he's like, well, whatever you put in, we're gonna have to remove, and so that's why my assumption, you don't wanna put concrete stabilization if you have to remove it while you're keeping it, do you think there's a benefit to having that as a basin there, or is it not that big a deal?
I, I think both of them would be pretty good options.
Sure.
I, I am a little concerned with the cement, I've never done it so close to the water, if it's 100% gonna cure out.
I would go with what you initially stated here at the last statement you made prior to this, go with a cheaper GeoGrade, gravel it, and go from there, and then move forward when we move forward. If it's next year, the following year, whatever it is, we don't have then no $200,000 vested in that road.
Well, the only thing with the GeoGrid is I would recommend a pit run on top of it.
Okay, so...
Not the actual, like a Class 13?
Yeah, not a, I would put the Class 13 on the top of the road.
Right.
Just for driving service in the meantime, and then we could peel that back before we do the permanent.
Yep.
You're just saying use like pit run or some kind of...
Yeah, something cheaper.
There's plenty of material out of that old one pit that didn't make the cut for the gravel that, you know, would be available for purchase in Kent probably, at least I was told that.
Right, well, I think we own a lot of the same stuff that Kent does, we own a pile of...
Okay, or even better.
Fines and stuff like that, and we were talking about that yesterday with the guys from 10-Star.
So if there's some kind of fines, rock, anything that you think would be permissible, we have it in that pit probably, so.
And it'll work with you as far as what you'd want for a base moving forward, right?
Yep, the only other recommendations is the riprap on the sloughs.
Yeah.
And then, the road's gonna get very skinny, so I would strongly recommend putting some signs up too, like we did down...
It's gonna be steep.
Yeah, 'cause it's so steep, it's gonna be skinny.
Really like that Bergad's or even on 88, where it's, I mean, you go up, you're gonna get skinnier, so...
It's, there's nothing there.
Yeah, we'd have to put the object markers up, and then probably have to reduce the speed for the time being.
How deep is that?
Can we do, reduce the speed of this county?
Oh, we did, um...
We could put signs up, I don't know if you could reduce the speed, you should put signs up.
I mean, like, through that Bergad's loop, that's reduced actually, the limit signs up there, so.
But just put one of them up if you can, so that the guys can still get around with their equipment if they have, but nobody being...
There's, there's regulations to that, so, I mean, we'll do what we can, but there's regulations when you, yeah, to put them up.
So how deep is the water there?
I, I don't know.
I've just heard up to 12 feet.
Is it good?
I mean, we never went and probed it or measured it.
What's the expectation as far as timeline? I mean, obviously not when it starts, 'cause we all know when it quits raining, but when you start and put GeoGrid, how long you think it'll take to do a half a mile?
Depending on, um...
Let's just use ideal conditions, let's say we don't get rained out, and you could work every day out, and how, do you think a week, two weeks?
You're probably gonna be about two weeks, I mean, it's, if you're just gonna use county forces, like, that's two trucks, maybe, maybe three, maybe four, but every time we do something like this, something else has to suffer the consequence.
And I was, where, where I was going is that, it's, it's obvious we have other concerns in the county, so when you make a commitment to doing something like this, just remember something else. The reason why someone isn't giving gravel is because we're doing it somewhere else, so if you're gonna make that commitment, it sounds great to buy the GeoGrid and have the county guys do it, you pull four guys off, somebody in Strasburg's not getting the road blade, and they're not getting gravel, somebody in Litton, Hazelton, just...
Maybe we should bring it up, and if somebody bid it locally, and you guys focus on our roads and keep the blades moving on our roads. 'Cause every time it happens, all these other roads get neglected, and you never, ever catch up on these roads two weeks in a row, never.
What you get behind, what you're behind.
Well, I bring that up because we, we get in that trap where we're like, hey, we're gonna do it ourselves and save money, and that's the smart thing to do, right? And then, like, you don't realize, like, in your mind, like, you're pulling half your road crew to work out a half mile of road for two weeks, and then, and then the people from wherever come in and go, we haven't seen a blade in two weeks, while your guy's fixing Seventeenth Avenue, like, so that's where thinking outside the box I'm done.
When, when we do that, I would, I'd venture to guess that you're probably gonna go up to that 200, 250,000 dollars then.
Well, and the other problem with...
Hiring a contractor, I mean, that's just...
I mean, and the other...
What it's probably gonna be, I mean, that's just a rough estimate, obviously.
I mean, the other problem with putting it out for bids too is, not only is everybody probably kind of booked, but it's also gonna take more time, where, I mean, if we get the weather we need, and you can get the GeoGrid on site, theoretically you could start any time, right? And so, that's the other downside of wanting to bid it out, too, those, you could be waiting a month, two months to even get someone, I mean, that...
We don't know that we're speculating.
Right, all I'm doing is putting it out there, because we, we like to make decisions, and it's like, you know, well, I think it'd be great if you could get someone to do it, so we could keep our guys on our roads, that, I don't disagree, that's the only reason why even the cement stabilization, in my mind, you probably have one or two county guys assisting with gravel hauling or something, but they're doing most of the work, that's something to be considered, 'cause 40, 50,000 dollars of material, sounds cheaper, but you got four or five guys on there, I mean, we're, we're running hundreds of dollars an hour for a couple guys up there, maybe in the thousands even, you start penciling it out, it's gonna cost us $100,000, even if doing it ourselves, so...
And regardless which way you go, the road will have to be shut down for a while.
If it was only two or three days, wouldn't be bad, but...
You know, especially if you decide to go with the GeoGrid auction, then it'll have to be shut down till it's completed.
Right, 'cause you're...
You have to lay it out, and it's, can't drive on it, and, I mean, we tried closing it down, and someone already took the road close signs down, and...
Never found it.
Never found the two, they, they, someone took two of them, I don't know where they went. They sent the other ones nicely in the grass with the stakes, but then two of them were missing, so...
Well, I just know for the fact of being from the construction world, if you, if you ask for bids with the expectation that you need to have a bid turn around within a couple days or a week, and you need to start within two or three weeks, you're not gonna get a very good price, 'cause most people are gonna go, I'll do it, but it's gonna cost you X, and that's where, that's the trouble with the bidding side too, it'd be different if it was November and we're bidding it for April, but we're literally trying to bid it within And that's where, that's the trouble with the bidding side too, it'd be different if it was November and we're bidding it for April, but we're literally trying to bid it within a month, that's gonna be tough, so.
You know, the biggest part is just getting the gravel there, really the the rolling out the GeoGrid isn't the hardest, so it's, I mean. We can look at maybe hiring a contractor just to bring gravel.
Right, and I don't I don't think you probably have to put it out for bids if you're keeping it, you know, if you're looking at bringing a contractor on for. Twenty to fifty thousand or something, you're gonna spend that with your county guys anyway, and on top of that, we're gonna get killed on not getting our roads done, so I. I'd strongly consider seeking some, maybe some smaller contractors that might be able to wiggle in a week of. Of bringing a piece or two of equipment down and helping you spread some gravel, so we're not putting five guys up there, we're putting two or something.
Right, you only need one guy to spread the gravel.
No, I don't think, I don't think, well, I mean, in in theory, you probably should put it up on bids, so you think you get the fairest best option, but if it's under, I believe it's two hundred thousand, Joe?
Yes.
It's under two hundred thousand, you can hire someone, so. To generally what we do is like with a lot of stuff is Skylar will go and get on the horn with two or three people that are localish to the area and go, hey, man. We got this project, I don't quite know what I need, but this is about what we would need, and and maybe they just offer a per hour basis and we meet right here, right, and use them for a week. Maybe you only need them for two days, or I, you know, and just see if they're even interested, if they are, if they'll float you an hourly rate and you can use them as you see fit, there's. Like we talked about, there's K and H, there's uh Russ Lawler, there's, there's probably guys maybe out of Kidder County, anything that would maybe go, yeah, for a week. I I mean, you're right on the edge of Kidder County, you could get someone from Steel coming down, there's tons of operators in that country. I mean, you can get somebody to come in and just, so we can keep most of our blades on.
Yeah, I mean, it would, if you're probably two people, like from the county, if we're gonna hire the hauling done, you. Probably have to have someone haul load them, so you're getting inaccurate out of that, and then one person on the other end. Laying it out and spreading it.
I mean, let's just agree, we're probably gonna roughly spend a hundred thousand, no matter what we do, if we can keep two more blades on the road and still spend that single one money. We're gonna save ourselves a lot of beans verbally and possibly physically.
Right.
Right, a lot of grief.
Right, yes, I I think we need to entertain that stuff.
Cause it's getting way to the spring of the year now, there's moisture, everything's getting pushed back for you, is it not?
Oh, yeah.
Big time, it's the farmers, everybody, you know?
It's just, we're in a wet wet cycle.
Only good news is that everything's getting pushed back to everybody else too, so you might be able to get somebody that just come down for a little bit in between projects, so.
Right.
I guess the the decision of the board or, I mean, I don't know if we necessarily, would you wanna make a motion of it and give Skylar the authority to move forward and. Or does somebody wanna seek bids as a commissioner or something to do, I mean, I think we need to make a move on it and do something so that we're proceeding.
Are we making for just the GeoGrid or with cement stabilization? I gotta figure out what, which one you're gonna do.
What we're gonna do and how we're gonna go about it, so we do.
Well, I think the GeoGrid is the cheapest.
Yeah, in my opinion, I'd go along with Donnie, I'd make a motion that we go along with the cheaper GeoGrid that's.
Right.
Right.
With it.
Stayed it and get resources to come into haul gravel with us to stockpile it for you.
Yeah.
To get it in place for you and then take it from there.
Well, we'd have to, it'd be a haul and placement right away, there's no place to bring it in or store it.
That's the way to do it, I feel.
I agree.
Well, I think what we should do is we should probably put a number to the bids, like, and you think, like, okay, if it's under fifty grand. Get somebody in here, or thirty grand, whatever, I mean, what, I, we should put a number to it, so that way it's not like, oh, yeah, you did it, but.
Can you help us with a number? Being you're sitting and you look at this project, the footage and all, you've got a better understanding of that than we do.
Yeah, it it's gonna be expensive, I know that.
Even with the GeoGrid and the gravel place.
Yeah, if you hire somebody, for sure. I mean, it's uh.
I I guess what I heard, the other thing to do would be is if someone goes, yeah, I'll come down, I'll bring two guys and I'll bring this equipment, this equipment that you want. And I want three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and then you give Skylar a number, like, kid, just go until you hit. Twenty-five thousand, but whatever, and and that way at least it gives him an angle, otherwise, a number doesn't mean anything and we're either gonna overspend or underspend on something. So that's where, like, whatever you guys are comfortable with, like, can Skylar bring on a contractor for X amount? Give him a, give him a limit, and then, you know, he can base it on that, cause you're probably just gonna get an hourly estimate, nobody's gonna be able to give you a price probably.
Right, well, we can roughly figure out um, well, the tonnage, and then we can go off that.
Right.
I know last year we did it by the hour, this year, like, we'll speak later about gravel hauling. You can do it by the loaded mile, you can do it by the tonnage. It's a few different options we can bid it out, I'm guessing short term they're gonna wanna do probably by the hour, you know?
Well, I mean, you can.
So how much was it to GeoGrid, is that much?
Uh, worst case, hopefully fifty-two thousand dollars. That's the best.
Could a guy get the whole thing done for sixty, seventy thousand?
Hauling gravel?
If you go with the cheaper GeoGrid.
How far do we haul that?
Well, it'd have to come out of the woolbon pit.
How far is?
Seventeenth to.
So it's twenty miles?
No, uh, I'd have to look at a map.
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say ten, but it depends on how you get it out of there, cause you can't go.
Well, it'd have to come back.
You'd have to backtrack to get to the Federal Aid Road and then get all the way out and go around the threshing grounds, and yeah, I mean, you backtracking, that's. It's fifteen at least, I would say, we're just winging it. Yeah. From the woolbon pit. Cause you wouldn't be able to go past like Tony Bungardner's and all, you'd never get around there.
No.
You'd have to go back across the, the Rick and you old bridge we're gonna replace and go back. Yes, you'd have to get back by by Sandy Bungardner's farm where that gets down to fifty-six, and you have to go all the way into Braddock and you have to go around the threshing grounds to get to Seventeenth.
Oh, probably thirteen, fourteen miles, something like that.
It's by far the closest, so I'm not even.
It's supposed to twenty. So it's probably gonna be a hundred grand for sure.
I don't think it's actually.
Just for hauling, uh, potentially, yeah.
A hundred, a hundred thousand dollar bill just for hauling.
Here, what, six, seven? What, what, eight thou, yeah, eight thousand ton? Let's say eight thousand. Eight thousand.
Eight thousand ton.
I mean, times ten bucks, I'm sure.
And you get how many ton on a load?
Uh, twenty-five, twenty-five roughly, twenty, and now you got better, the roads are soft, you better lighten them up.
So you're gonna lighten them.
So, yeah.
And you're going across a road that's soft, so you're gonna lighten them.
Right, so, and then every every truck's got a, you know, depending on what they bring, N dumps would be the best. So then you're gonna cut back on a little bit, if you bring semis, and every one of them's gotta be backed in there, cause you can't drive on this till, every load's gotta be backed in.
Not easy.
It's, yeah, it's no quick, easy, cheap, magic go on fix to these projects, so. But the alternative is take the phone calls and people get stuck and close the roads down and. You know, and then when we start working on that, I guarantee that the neighbor with their driveway underwater is gonna be calling. So you're, we, someone might as well make a motion or a decision on what we're gonna do with that. If we're gonna just stand the ground and we don't do any work to it, or.
Well, her husband's gonna turn a hundred this year, you think he's not gonna need an ambulance sometime? Or even her, so you're gonna need emergency service up there sooner or later.
I mean, I, yeah, you gotta be careful what you say.
Right.
Like, that's the thing.
You gotta be so careful, you know?
I mean, I I truly do feel for them, but at what point do, is it the county's responsibility to get them to their doorstep? I I I totally get their situation.
Right. But you'd think they'd wanna make arrangements that's more suitable for them, I would think, but yeah, who am I, can't say nothing.
I mean, do we wanna try to gather some numbers and have a.
I think that's the best.
Quick, quick meeting in two weeks and just.
Yeah.
Try to verify it that way, or, I mean.
You two guys gotta try to work together.
Why, yeah, you need to come up with a more firm figure, yeah.
Well, I think the best thing to do would be, like you said, go with the GeoGrid idea, see if you can get some kind of bids for some assistance, so we even know what we're looking at. We get something that's within the realm of possibility, we're gonna have to do it, um. As far as I'm concerned with the situation we're at and the situation of this project, it might be time to maybe consider an emergency on something like this. Cause we can probably utilize some other, maybe we can get some help on some other stuff too, since obviously with the moisture. You know, playing the waiting game sounds like a proven thing, that's probably not possible on some of these roads, so maybe we look at declaring an emergency. I mean, if we put a timetable on it for. Maybe like two weeks. You know, put us in the neighborhood of like the twentieth of May, if you can come up with.
Okay, we get money, on federal money, if we declared an emergency?
Well, this one's not gonna actually be any federal money for this.
When you declare a county emergency, you get to a, you get to access the emergency fund.
Yeah.
To pay some, you can't spend money in emergency fund unless there's.
Well, the reason I say that, if we're talking, if we're talking about spending a hundred thousand dollars, that's something we definitely didn't budget for, so something else is gonna have to suffer. Or we utilize.
How much is in emergency fund?
Um, it should be like three.
It's roughly about three hundred and some thousand dollars.
It should be down here, if you look in your sheet there.
Emergency fund budget is actually a four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six ninety-eight, so. I mean, that's what it's there for, this is a Federal Aid Road, it's pretty important, like Carlsons are no Carlsons, that road needs to probably be maintained, no matter what, like. Not saying that their property doesn't matter or doesn't matter, but either way, I think this merits an emergency, and there's probably one or two other roads that are probably right on the edge of. Probably needing something more than just blading and graveling, I'm sure we can pick a few spots, there's probably gonna be a culvert or two already, there's some smaller culverts going. One of these days, it's probably gonna be a bigger one, I may wanna entertain entering into an emergency declaration for some of this stuff. Cause it's starting to get a little big, I mean, there's no guarantee you'll even get it done for a hundred thousand.
Right.
Cause you know what it is, you tear into something, and all of a sudden you find out the GeoGrid ain't working, you need more, or you need something different, or you need more stuff, I.
Always costs more than we predict.
Yeah.
And I know we didn't budget for this separate from the other things we budgeted for, that's why we have the emergency fund, so I would, um. I would say the best thing to do is probably just roughly plan for an emergency meeting on May twenty-first. Or at least a s- another meeting, special meeting, I should call it, and the intent should be some kind of solution for Seventeenth.
Yeah, I'm leaving the twenty-second, so if you do it before that, I'll be gone a weekend and a half.
So we can do it the twenty-first?
If you did it the twenty-first, that'd be around.
Probably two weeks from now, it'd be Tuesday. Well, you can call in from the field, Don, but, uh.
So we're looking at just gathering the numbers on roughly what the trucking's gonna cost.
I think you'd have to start seeking some local bids at least to see if you can get some help and probably a firmer estimate on your quantities, so we know. Like, cause the other thing about it too is you gotta know your quantities, cause we're gonna do all county, like, we need to have a rough idea of how long it's gonna take, because. We pull three to five guys off for two weeks, we're gonna have to make that decision, and then we're gonna have to understand the ramifications of it.
Yeah, probably, probably better to get it done in June too, I mean, before, because if we do it now in May, farmers use that road all the time too, or can't get through it.
Yeah, I mean, it's soft. I was standing on the shoulder yesterday and I started sinking just by my own weight.
You have the road closed right now?
No. We drove through it yesterday.
Well, I know it closed a bunch, and they drove around it too, right, so I, I mean, but you're probably gonna have to close that road, I would imagine.
Long as, I mean, we're kinda, everybody in that area knows that no heavy trucks go across it, I mean, we drove it with the pickup, you just have to straddle the side a little bit.
Yep. You go across heavy equipment, it's gonna go through.
Oh, yeah.
But it's soft and saturated, that dirt with water.
I think, I think you have to close the road.
If we wanna close it, we'll close it and then.
At least, we gotta close it at least temporarily until this weather at least some, I mean, cause we're not getting any help from the weather right now, and that, the road's not gonna get any better if you keep.
You're talking about the north and south, huh?
Well, I got Seventeenth Avenue.
Yeah, cause they can get around from on the other side, uh, to the north and go around to the east there.
Yeah, that's a good way to run.
Yeah, well, I'd rather take a detour to get stuck in the middle of that lake, I tell you that, by driving, so I think you kinda have to do something, so for the people that don't know the area too. Now that they're taking a load down there, you start getting contractors or somebody thinking they got a Federal Aid road to drive it down into Braddock, they're gonna take that road.
Yeah, it would do the same.
So I I would, I would suggest, just closing it for the short term here till we come up with a solution, cause somebody's gonna get stuck in there bad, or something's gonna be the worst.
Yeah, if you tear them up, they, you don't bring them back.
I mean, anybody gotta be disagreeing with that, I mean, I think we should close it at least for now.
Okay.
No, all right.
Okay, local traffic wants to scoot around it with a pickup, that's their prerogative, but we, and we as a county probably gotta at least put some signs up.
Yeah.
Hard dirt there, that might get you in more trouble than putting signs up. So I mean, that's kind of where we're at for a resolution here, we're gonna try and meet up in two weeks, get some harder numbers on a estimate for getting it repaired.
Yeah, we'll come, we'll give you the hard quantities and the rough, what, some of the contractors come back.
Right, see if you can get some contractors that are interested, you can, even then we already know what we gotta do, but we're gonna have to do something, so. It's nine, nine AM on May twenty-first, let's just plan out in a special meeting. The objective is gonna be Seventeenth Avenue and whatever else may come up between now and then, might not be the only one to talk about. That's at least a decision, anybody okay with that, any other additional thoughts?
Okay, yeah, we can.
Okay, John, you got contracts on the preliminary engineering and stuff, we're moving forward with a long-term solution?
Yep, ideally we would get going on that as soon as possible, if you guys are okay with that.
I don't think we have much of a choice, so I think we gotta do something, it's just gonna be worse.
That's for both projects.
Think what we should do is try and finish up with John here, then we'll probably push out with Skylar. We got Les here for something at eleven here, we'll probably just bring him on so we can get it done, we'll bring him back.
Yeah.
But let's just finish John first, since he's here, but.
I think that's about, I guess we can, he did, uh, we worked on some gravel hauling, as you've seen in that map. We're kinda part of that, I guess. Old did, um, as you can see, we are gonna gravel that, what's highlighted in the green, that's the gravel, where we're gonna gravel. The other colors is just when they're going back empty or hauling heavy, or when they're loaded. It's thirty-one point five nine miles.
How many?
Thirty-one point five nine miles.
Of gravel?
Gravel.
Of gravel. If we put three inches of gravel on it. It's five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So I think we need to just design or allocate a number to that, and then we can tweak the project to that.
I think you could assign that there.
So.
While we probably have a high motion to, uh, prove that we're gonna get.
Were these roads.
This is just, uh, as we discussed prior, you know, we've worked down there, we've worked up here, it's, this, these guys' turn to to get some gravel, so.
This is more of a feasibility project, most gravel for the cheapest price in the biggest areas, right?
Right.
That's kinda what we're talking about.
Thirteenth Avenue's a pretty bad road, I mean, we we got text messages and phone calls on it, you know, prior, so. And then that that one spot up there you see in the the, the blue. Up on tw- off of twenty-second and seventy-six, that's actually St. Michael's where we did that stabilization, that's why it's not. It's not green.
Three hundred, what did you say, five hundred and some thousand?
Yeah, I mean, these are rough numbers, cause you just, you try to take it by what.
Near county the cost of the gravel in that too, right?
No, that's just.
That's just your estimate for trucking?
That's just the trucking. It's about ninety-two loads a mile. That's gonna put you three inches of gravel on it, gravel hauling's expensive.
I've been too sarcastic this meeting lately, but I guess it explains why people say, how come we don't get gravel in our area, well, the good reason why is because. We only have two or three trucks, and if you hired it out, I mean, look what you're spending, I mean.
Right, and I mean, it's, obviously, you know, we did some stuff down in the Hollow Westfield area. And we didn't go that thick on the gravel, and I think that's started to bite us a little bit, you know?
A lot of that gravel, but it's like snot, clay with clay, and it gets wet.
Yeah, but that gravel came out of the Vanderborst.
Some did, some come out of the note pit, with a lot of rock and stuff in there, so.
But didn't they crush it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they crushed that.
We crushed the additional rock into it to actually lighten it up, because.
They said the Vanderborst pit was actually better gravel than, on the, on the clay roads.
On on the clay roads, Vanderborst pit makes perfect sense, cause it's light as clay, that's the beauty of mixing it, that's the one thing we probably need to consider more than anything too, is. You're gonna have to spend some money on some trucking to get the right gravel in the right spot, not just always put the closest stuff, because if you're putting the same gravel on the same roads all the time. Well, if it's always a heavier gravel, you're just getting clay on clay on clay wall. In theory, the cattail gravel needs to be in Braddock or or in East of Litten and other stuff there needs to be out west. Because the sandy stuff's out west and the clay stuff's out east and.
Gravel's always those, it's a double edged sword, do you crush it for the ninety percent that is dry and hard and smooth? Or ten percent that it rains?
Yeah.
You know, like, that Vanderborst gravel's pretty good for wet times and in some clay areas. But then when it dries out, it washboards up like crazy and then it just starts ridging really bad.
It's horribly dusty too, because of that, it disintegrates, like, it's, yeah, there's a lot of downside to it too. And anytime you blend anything, you're adding mileage and labor, so it's even more expensive, like, yeah.
Right, so, I guess, yeah, we can, um, I think we can handle the gravel stuff, if there's nothing else for.
Good.
Old, we can postpone for a little bit.
This is basically a project you put together as far as where you think you could get the most gravel on the most roads that need it.
And that's the, probably the closest roads to the gravel pit, you know?
Sure.
You see, the gravel pit's not very far.
Yeah.
Start trucking further away, more expensive it gets.
Yep, and you get less done.
Get less done.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah.
Something to consider, at least, that's what we're hoping, is at least have something to look at, so good.
Well, uh, yeah, if you don't need anything else from Old, then we'll, uh.
We'll pick it up unless John's got something to add.
Uh, just the contracts, I had two copies of each project, um, one copy for the county and then one for us.
Okay. We can just sign them and get an email today or something, or do you want them out?
It, it's up to you.
Okay. Well, I guess we can add that up now, so the one, the one is the contract for the preliminary engineering.
That you talked about.
Yeah.
That's the, and that is a hundred percent funded through the state flex funding program, so that.
You guys will have to pay us, but then you'll get reimbursed from DOT, basically.
So one is the.
Do you have to wait as long as we do to get reimbursed?
I think we're gonna drive, yeah, if you guys, we'll send you the bill, you guys get reimbursed, I think.
Oh, is that how it is? Okay, I get how it works, okay.
So is one in agreement with the DOT and the other one's in agreement with you to do the preliminary engineering, is that for?
No, they're both through us. The county and us.
So I have two copies, one is for you guys and one's for us.
Yeah.
And that's for, and so for the same thing?
For the same thing, yep.
So it's just one, so that's basically, we'd entertain a motion to entertain and to approve this, uh, preliminary engineering services agreement, which is.
I don't have a motion to approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the preliminary engineering services agreement, so second, second to that motion. Any more discussion? Just for clarification, this is for the per- preliminary, preliminary engineering for the permanent grade raise of Seventeenth Avenue. If funding is available, or we can come up with funding to actually do the project, cause the preliminary engineering is a hundred percent covered. Everybody understanding? We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Not hearing any others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agreement approved. I think that's pretty much it then, for John anyway. Skyler, you just wanna stick around, we'll just bring Wes in, you have, with you?
Did you give him his copy?
Yeah, he wants his copy.
Yeah.
I gave you both.
Oh.
And there's the two projects too.
The same thing here?
Those are the same, that was my question, I had, I had two copies of the same thing.
Yeah, two copies of each.
You should have four copies.
Four copies sold. Okay. So this is the one for eighty-eighth street, singlet.
Oh, John, I have to sign this out.
Okay, so there's two copies on two projects, so.
And if you want to put a date on that too.
I'll do.
So yeah, so I guess we'd entertain a motion to enter into a construction engineering services agreement with old engineering for the culvert replacement. One and a half mile north and five miles east of Stroldberg, which is eighty-eighth street, singlet project. Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the agreements, they're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion on the engineered agreement for eighty-eighth street, singlet? Not hearing any others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Agreement approved. And now I think we got you taken care of, John. Uh, folders, uh, I think keep the main maps, but give the swol. Anybody want their map and all that? All right. If there's nothing else, then I think we'll, uh, we'll take Wes. We'll bring Skyler back on.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, John. So next is Wes Nassel, building permit to construct a seventy-two by a hundred farm shop on the southwest quarter, section four, township one twenty-nine, range seventy-four. Yeah, plus the floor is yours, you guys have questions, comments, concerns?
Not really, I guess, uh.
Okay.
You still look at like how it got to be, oh, John, that's still how you wanna do it, right?
Yeah, it would, it would face north and south there.
Oh, you'd go this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
The bins would be gone, right?
I moved the bins, I measured from the center of the road, this morning, I measured from the center of the road to the west side of that grain bin, and it's seventy-three feet. So from there to the west, the west edge of that grain bin is seventy-three feet.
What is the setback, seventy-five or something guessing off that road?
Uh, a hundred.
It's a hundred.
That's what I thought, I thought of that.
Yeah.
That was that old deal, I would put it in place of the county years back, right, when there was that fuss with Malhiding and Van Bee.
I don't know for that, I don't, I'm not sure about that. This has been a hundred since I've been here. Cause we're gonna consider this a minor township, county road.
I was gonna say, that can't be an major road.
Yeah.
No, it is, yeah, I mean.
It's a hundred twenty-five with special eight, but a hundred forty-two.
Yeah, setback on it is thirty-three foot rateway probably, but so a hundred foot setback.
Yeah, it's got thirty-three.
Yeah.
At the par, if you can go back. What's that, at the par, if you can go back? Pens are big, I mean, if, from, from that old shop, from that old shop to the, to the edge of the grain bin.
To that seventy-three feet.
Is, is, it's about ninety feet. Um, I, I don't want them tight against, because eventually that old shop is gonna, it's rusting, it's, it's, it's gonna disappear. You know, I mean, ideally, I'd like to go with an eighty-foot shop. From that shop to the edge of the vein is ninety feet. Um, you know, and then if I can move ten feet in there, or, you know, I, I try to stay as good as I can, but I mean, I would still, that bin is still not a hundred feet from the road. Anyway, um, you know, there's trees there, there's pens, there's fence there. It's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect anything, because that bin's been there for twenty years, you know, I, I don't foresee, you can't get down that road with anything wider than you try to grab down that road south with a thirty-foot head, there's trees right against the road that shouldn't be there. You know, I'm just, I'm, I don't wanna make a fuss, I wanna do this right, but I, I just figured.
It's the same token, but then when we got a hundred foot setback, then you're allowing.
I get that, I get that, but I mean, like I said, I, I figured that, that, you know, all of a sudden, okay, you move that bin, which is there at seventy-three feet, move that bin, well then, okay, well now we gotta go with the hundred foot deal or whatever. Then in theory, you guys should blow that bin up and, and it shouldn't be there, in theory, to begin with.
How far is your growl up there?
Right there. It'd be fifty, I mean, it's, it'd probably be forty feet, I don't think it'd be fifty, maybe two, above. I ne- I guess I didn't measure that, I just kinda sorta, you know, it's, it's not an intersection, it's not a main road, it's not, I mean, whatever, I just kinda just. Uh, and I don't have no other place in the yard to build, to build a building, just the way, it's a frickin' mud hole down there. That pen is a mud hole, so I just build it up and eliminate that pen to begin with. But, you know, it's gonna get, it's gonna end up in that area beside the road, kinda, you know, I mean. I figured I would check into it and see what the setbacks are and, and bring it to your guys' attention, and see what, and see what I can do, you know, I mean. You know, I mean, if I, if I'd have to, which I'd sooner go with wider than, than longer, cause I'd like to put a shop or an office and a bathroom and stuff in there, you know. Back it up to a sixty-foot, well, then we should go sixty by a hundred and four to fifty feet long. There are options, I guess, I, I, I do know there are options to go, go in there, but the, the longer you go, cause that's a drainage through the, through those pens there. Where in a, in a major snow, rain event, I mean, that, um, many years ago, Alex was always gonna put bigger culverts in there, cause there's five thousand acres of drainage that drain right through the middle of that yard, through my, through my yard.
I seen it once, right when I was out.
It's just, I mean, there's, there's, there's three culverts or about one and a half culverts there, cause they're, they're, they're old and, and not big enough. It backs up so bad that it almost ran, it almost runs across.
Over the road.
The way it, it, it curves through the trees there, between the two sets of trees where the water runs, but the dugout is on the other side of the road there.
So you wanted to go from the center of the road up to the edge of that building, that you, that bin that's there now already?
Well, from the center of the road to the edge of the building, to the west edge of that building would be, would be a hundred, figure it out, I guess. So one nine, seven, three would be? Be a hundred and sixty-three feet from the center of the road to the, to the edge of the shop.
Edge of that building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but to the first grain bin.
To the first grain bin from the center of the road to the west edge where he's got the line there, seventy-three feet.
And that's where you wanted to start?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't wanna go closer to the road. No, I, I wouldn't, absolutely not.
I mean, there's a building there already anyway, that's, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, but that's grandfathered in.
The hell it is, these old yards, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself too, as, and for you in defense. These yards, not of them were designed for big buildings, or for big equipment.
Right.
And they just got places they could afford to build something, they built it.
No, I wish the yard wasn't where it's located, I mean, just because of the, the water table and the, and the yardage, but, you know, to go, I could go up where I built that hoop on to the north and put a building there, but then you gotta drive to the damn shop every day.
Yep.
Yeah, there's nobody who lives down that road the other way anyway.
Nobody lives down.
Richie's way down straight south, but, I mean, there's, since they built a road over by Russell Holm, by Joe Fredt, to the, to the east of my.
And they everything comes in and.
Very little traffic comes down that road anymore.
That's the only thing, I get, you know?
So I mean, it's not, that road isn't used very much anymore.
Nothing on that road, all the way down.
But, yeah, well, I just, yeah, I was gonna, like I said, bring it, see what I can, if I can do anything, or if not, I mean, whatever, it is what it is.
That's your old shop center, Glenn put up, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I gotta shift the container, and there's an hopper bin, the center bin, the floor shot, it doesn't even get used, and I, I do use that other, I think it's a fifty-five hundred bushel. I do use that one here, but I would move that one and, and put the shop north itself, right there.
So how far will you come up to the driveway with? Can't let those vehicles apart?
I, I would make it even with the, I started even with that other building and go north.
Okay. So you're gonna have to build up a lot?
I would have to build it, I'd put, I'd have to bring a bunch of fill in there, cause if it does slope to the, to the north, but how much, I don't know, I guess I never, never set a transit or figured that out, but I'm sure on the, on the one end, I'd have to bring it up six, eight feet.
I'm not against it, but that's my opinion. I just know what you're up against when you're sitting on these farmyards, when you wanna make progress in every sprint.
Yeah, and I, and I wouldn't, like I said, I wouldn't come closer to the road at all, you know, that's just.
That's, that's what I was wondering, if you come up to that, what a grain bin.
Can we grant, can we grant him variance? I know this variance is becoming a very dirty word.
That's the thing, you wanna go there again.
But we'll sign it this time. We'd have to sign it. I don't know.
Nobody's looking at me, I'm supposed to resign, I'm running this county into the ground, you guys make a decision, that's what I have to do. The only thing I can tell you is, I, I understand exactly what's going on here, the best spot to build is in a spot that the ordinance claims you can't build, but properties are meant to be confined to the setbacks, the setbacks aren't confined to the properties, I mean, that's, that's the, I mean, I know we have a variance process, and there's times when a variance needs to be allowed, I have no problem with putting it there, but the trouble is, is that, I mean, if you have a hundred foot setback, you're making variances for all the time, you might as well create the setback seventy-five feet. If you move to seventy-five, somebody's gonna wanna build it seventy, and that's, and you have a fifty foot setback, and the reason for these setbacks, especially on situations like this, is because they become snow catches and issues with wanting to do any road maintenance. Now, I know we don't maintain any roads, so who cares anyway, but that's the trouble, I mean, nobody lives on that road now, but if somebody wants to develop it, and then that dang building, that, that dang Wes has always blocks the road, and then it's always the dang commissioners, let them build that building, and, and that's the reason why we have the books. And that's, that's the only reason I advocate, if it was up to me, let everybody build wherever they want, I really don't care, in that sense, I don't wanna say I don't care, but I mean, I, I, I don't look at this and go, oh, you're completely out of line, it makes perfect sense what you wanna do. The reason we have the setbacks is because there were issues, setbacks were created, and the properties need to adhere to the setbacks, not the setbacks adhering to the properties. That's my belief. I've, I know we've granted setbacks in the past, I know I've approved some of them and agreed with some of them, but I'll say, since the fence line incident, my opinion on variances is I don't know if I support any of them anymore. It's hard. Cause there's always a reason for a variance, there's no disagreement in that, but it just ends up breeding more trouble, I don't know. It's gonna be a conflict no matter what, I'm tired of avoiding conflicts, so I, I don't support a variance, and it has nothing to do with you or your property, and I don't mean it impersonal, but the setback is a hundred, the setbacks a hundred feet, I, I know driving through a shop somewhere would be inconvenient, but that's why we have the ordinance, is it's not about creating convenience all the time for everybody, so.
How far is it up to your building?
He's a mild rougher, right?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's.
It's a trek.
It's a trek.
I see it, I mean, I'm, I'm not in dispute, but it would be an annoyance, I don't.
You know, I mean, yeah, I could set it in that, in that lot up there where I got a bunch of machinery and stuff sitting there. I hear you wanna come out of the house and walk over to the shop, you don't wanna walk.
Well, right, well, I get you.
Chasing juggling this and that, I mean, I park my side-by-side or whatever in the shop, and you walk out and jump out and go check out.
Go check out.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, you don't wanna walk.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna walk a half mile. Whatever, if I had thirty cows, I'd be a whole different deal, but there's, yeah, I mean, whatever, I, I, like I said, I, I'm not, I, I, I came to the meeting to, to bring it to your guys' attention and ask for opinion, you know? And then you might get the next guy that's just gonna go build it and not even talk to you guys about it, and then, you know, I mean, so I just kinda was trying to do the right thing, I guess, and.
Well, you are doing the right thing, you are.
Right, right, and, and I'm not gonna go and, and just go to the shop, just because, oh, you said no, but I just, I thought I'd, I'd ask, I guess.
If you went a little narrower and just went water.
I can do that to a certain point, but I get, there's so much water in the back there where I'd almost have to, not to sound stupid, but then you guys would almost have to put some better drainage in there so that water can get the heck out of there. Because, I mean, it backs up, where it'll back up, it, it has backed up where it almost gets to that hip roof barn. Cause their, cause their water can't get through that yard fast enough.
So you might have to have a culvert under your buildings, would you say?
No, I would, I mean, if I go, if I go longer, I would have to, I'd have to kinda do something.
You could see what I'm saying, John.
I was gonna ask, is there a chance that it would get flooded sometime, even if you rebuild it up?
It wouldn't get flooded unless, you know, I mean, there was a few years ago when the snow came, I mean, and I, I called the county, Dennis was the commissioner at that time. I, I damn near took the loader and I damn near dug the road out, you know, just because everything, it just backed up, backed up, and the culverts didn't, it was one of them springs where I actually drove in with the tractor into the water, you know, trying to bust the snow up out of there so we could get the water out of there. But as far as the shop flooding, no, I'd say no, because I'd have to, I have to build, I would have to build up on the, the north side high enough, you know, to keep it, to keep the floor level and everything like that, you know? You know, and then, yeah, put a bunch of rock and stuff around the backside just for, because I know it, I know, I know the water that does come through the yard there, you know?
Well, that's what we can't see is the elevation, we don't know how it is.
That's my whole, I mean, if you were gonna give a variance for five or ten feet, and it's something where it's like, man, that's really just nitpicking it, that would be fine, I mean, when you're talking twenty to thirty feet like this, I mean.
Well, and then, you know, hit my, okay, well, on the, on the deal, I figured seventy-two feet. Oh, so fine.
Means you're talking twenty-eight foot variance though, that's, and that's saying you put it right on the variance line, a hundred feet, you know?
What did, what did I say here, a hundred and, if I'm ninety and seventy-three, would be a hundred and sixty-three feet from the edge of the shop to the center of the road.
To the center of the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the edge of your old building you're talking, right, Wes? So where, so, so you got a hundred and sixty-three feet between that existing building and the center of the road?
So if I go with a seventy-two foot building, I would, and, and put it tight against, I'd be ninety-one feet. You know, but yeah, if I go with a sixty foot, well then, but I'd sooner, I'd like to go a little wider, but I, I'm just, like I said, whatever, whatever we can do, but I don't like, I don't wanna put it tight against that other building. For the simple fact that it's gonna disappear someday, once it's totally unusable, probably in ten years. Or if it does, like I said, if we go with, I, I don't know how the, I, I never, I got a few quotes on some buildings, but it, it's gonna depend on this and if I go narrower or longer, um, it's dual. I just thought, you know, for, for workshop area, you know, to, I got a sixty-foot corn planter, well, you put a sixty-foot building up, you, you know, you're not gonna, you're not gonna fully plant or, you know, build.
You'd be lucky to get a fifty-foot door in a sixty-foot wide building, so.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying for, for working on it inside, you know, or, or, um, you know, like a forty or forty foot air seeder, you put it down, or then you can, that you could walk around. Where you spread the corn planter out inside the building, you know, where the, I mean, seventy-two would be the narrowest I would ideally like to go. So, that would leave me ninety feet from the center of the road, um.
So, you're on.
Kind of, but that would be tight against that other building. You know, I'd like to, you know, if a guy can leave a five, six foot space to put steel up and stuff like that.
For a couple of maybe fifteen feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be a lot, I, I, I don't know.
Your doors are to the south, are they?
I put one big door to the south and then one to the east. So, there would be no door on the, facing.
That would be north of your building, except for your door?
Yeah, yeah. It'd be towards the, the north end, I guess, I would want a side door to the, for the, to the north and then one big on, on the south side. Is what I have designed in my mind of, you know, on paper, I mean, just drew a few pictures here and there, how, how we could do this or how we can deal with different deals, I guess. You know, then in another sense, I thought there's a, on the west, east of the house, there's a bailin' plant sit there. But, yeah, that's not thirty feet, you know, that's a section line there, and get rid of that building and put it there would be the only other place in that yard. But that's a good usable building to just go and try to move it, but then if we do the hundred feet deal, I don't know what the setbacks are on the section line side of things.
That's right up against the two, pretty much, right?
Pretty damn close to the section line there, you know?
We have to have a hundred foot setback there, do we?
No, I don't, because would you consider a section line unimproved trail?
Yeah, yeah, I've used the hundred foot on section lines, it's basically off the thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three.
I guess we haven't had many people wanna build next.
Not typically, most of them, if they are doing it, it's cause it's a deal like that where the section line runs right by their yard and the main user of it, and they own both sides, or it's kinda one of them deals that's a little different, I, I wouldn't consider an unimproved section line a mine or road, I would probably be willing to grant a variance far more on that than an actual certified piece of rock. That's where.
How long is that bailin' plant, or? Or would you?
Scoot, scoot, don't, yeah, yeah, we should have up there, yeah.
How big is that?
Fifty by a hundred, I think, or something like that.
Fifty-one by a hundred?
Fifty-one, yeah.
To dry or spot?
A little bit, you know, but yeah, then, like I said, to get in and out with anything, it, it's kind of a.
A summing, yeah.
You know, the yard is, the yard is small or two there, but, yeah. See it there with the trucks sitting there, you know, it's not a, not a huge yard, you know, but.
They're all tight like that, all these yards, I'm just saying, boy.
But, yeah, I mean, if I go further to the, to the east there into that other hay yard, um, that just turns into a disaster.
Well, I could see, just, just from looking there, just come out of your house, walk into that shop there would be the best way to do it.
Right, but, but, I mean, and I never did measure to, you know, for that, but it would look stupid as hell and be a snow trap. For me, to start on the north side of that old shop and move it over ten feet, but be, 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 um, I don't know what you wanna call it. Until that other building would disappear, you know, it, 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 but then I'd be further, further into that drainage deal, but then I need, then I cared to be too also, but.
So, you say you wanted, that other building might disappear, so why don't you want, why don't you wanna go up almost against it?
I mean, so, to, to, to put steel and stuff, but you gotta get between it to, you know, to, if I was attaching it, it'd be a whole different deal, you know, but you gotta get in between with, there's shit like that, ladders and stuff like that to, to, um.
Screw your tin on.
Just screw your tin on and stuff like that, and then that one company said they, they wouldn't even, as far as, uh, the old snow and shit coming off of the new building onto that old building, cause that's only a twelve foot sidewalls.
Well, it's chores too, sometimes they don't look quite quick.
Yeah, you know, I guess I never checked into that, but, you know, I think, yeah, for the time being, I would probably build a little breezeway and put a door into, you know, cause I still do use that. You know, I'd probably park the loader tractor in there, cause it's full of mud and shit, and, and stuff like that, but, so.
What if you went longer in there, where you put your, your big door on the west side, so you can drive off that road right in there with your bigger equipment? Since you gotta fill anyway, you know what I mean? Run it longer, you can put your bathrooms on the other side, you know, a little bump out, and drive in off that road, put a bigger garage door on the west side, so you can get your bigger equipment in there. Then you wouldn't have to worry about it being so narrow, it could be wider, so you could get your bigger, you know what I mean?
Not really.
Well, we'll run it longer north and south.
Okay.
A little narrower, and then put your door off this road on the west side, so you can get in, you could put a big garage door on that side, so you can get your equipment in. And then you can always put a bathroom or something, you know, you wanted a little kitchen area, all this bathroom. On the east side, on the northeast side there, you could just build it, a little bump out on the other side of the building, you're gonna tear it down eventually. And you could still put a door in on this side, but then you could get your bigger equipment on that, bigger door on the west side.
If you go narrower, like a six, like I said, I, I have a sixty foot.
Right, and that's why if you put a bigger door on that west side, you could come right into there.
And, but you're still not gonna pull a planter inside the building, you don't have to work on it. That's, that's where I, I, I.
Yeah, I, no, I'm just, yeah, just spitballing there.
And he's so restricted on time with cattle.
Yeah.
The winter's your friend.
Kind of.
Right, the winter can't work out of the mud.
Well, right now, I'm, I'm working on my corn planter, I started working on that yesterday inside that hooplar.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, years ago, there used to be, you'd get a week in the spring where shit, it was nice out in the grass, he'd park things outside in the grass and fold it out, and he'd start working on it, like, I can't, I can't get nothing in that little shop, a motor tractor, that's all that fits in there, you know, I can't, my tractor with duals on doesn't fit in there, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm at the mercy of doing everything outside, you know? Sprayer, I drive up to the shop with the sprayer, the combine, I look over the top of it, it's not tall enough to get absolutely nothing in, I kinda need a building, but, um, other, yeah, I guess I do have buildings to get in and work on, but it's cold and dark and dusty dirt floors and stuff like that, but, so, no, and whatever you decide, I'm not gonna leave here, I'm probably pissed off a little bit, or whatever, but it is, it is what it is, you know, I mean, it just.
Only a little bit, you sure, you sure you don't want?
Probably, yeah, I don't, you know, I mean.
I know, you.
No, I'm gonna bring it to you.
You've been great, Wes, nobody enjoys these conversations, I totally understand where you're coming from, I just, I, I'll just, I'll just stand by.
And these, these setbacks have been in place for forever, or, or is it just been since like?
I know these setbacks have probably been in since, I believe, this was somewhere near the late eighties or nineties.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if this all came apart with.
It's in type with that, right, right, business deal or whatever.
That's when I, I think it came to the tension of the commission, am I right or wrong?
Yeah.
Right?
Okay, nobody paid, nobody paid attention to it.
Nobody would've thought of it.
This is a part of a comprehensive plan for nineteen eighty-two, then it's gone.
Nineteen eighty-two.
You know, we, uh, we gave that guy last month a little variance up there, not variance, we, you know, and this, I can see here too, I mean, he's, he's tight for space here. And if he doesn't go any farther than that other grain bin.
Really? I, I, I would think so. I wouldn't go in it, or it'd probably be, be a little less, you know, if I go even with the grain bin, I could put an eighty foot building in.
Cause that grain bin was.
And that could just add it with three.
And I'd still have ten feet between that other shop, I would.
And that grain bin was there for years and years already anyway, I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah, no, I guess that's, you know, but I don't wanna open a can of worms, cause all of a sudden, man, everybody's gonna come in, like you, you guys said it, you know, this, you have to do this guy, this guy, but, I really don't have another option here, other than relocating it to a whole different location, location in, in the, in the deal there of a structure of the yard, yeah.
Well, we had enough discussion about it, I would say we either approve table or deny this permit, um, if you're gonna approve it, if you're gonna approve it as it says, then you're also gonna have to approve a variance at some point too, if you're gonna make that a part of your motion, so. If somebody's ready to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion, I'll approve it, give them variance up to the edge of that grain bin where he was before. That's fine.
So, uh, I would, I would ask for a distance before you, before we get a sentence.
What is the distance from the center of the road to that first grain bin?
Off the west side of the first grain bin, right?
What's that?
You'd like it to the west side of that first grain bin.
Yeah, or a little bit less, you know, I mean, a little.
And you're looking at, how many feet is that thing?
From the road?
Seventy-three feet?
It was seventy-three feet, I ran a tape measure this morning, I mean, the wind was blowing in, it might be.
Commissioner, Commissioner Everly has made a motion to approve the building permit for Wes Mastol, along with a variance from the s- center line of the road to seventy-two feet, is that, was that the number?
Go seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet.
Go seventy-five.
I mean, is that gonna work for you?
That'll work for me, I mean.
That's more than.
Basically, just, so Don, Commissioner Everly has made a motion to approve a building permit from Wes Mastol with a variance of seventy-five foot setback, showing the center line of the road. Commissioner Materi seconds that motion, we are now in discussion.
You know, that's actually what it is, from the middle of the highway to my yard is seventy-five feet. Because I was, you know, that farm was there years ago, and it's, and you go up a half mile, then it goes back over. You know, that was.
Is your house seventy-five feet off the highway then? Or that, that's the right away and then?
That's the right away, my house is probably just a little bit more.
Set back off the right away though?
But the right away on the highway there is seventy-five feet from the center to the.
But I'll bet that right away is a hundred feet.
Yeah, it's a hundred feet.
Or a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and twenty.
A hundred and thirty.
I think it's a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
But like I said, it goes from my place, just then up a little ways, and then goes back over to a hundred and twenty feet again, you know?
Well, you go up there like we're Harry Grant, and then you guys sit up there on Highway eighty-three, up on that hilltop. I'll bet that's no more than where that house used to sit up there.
And even along the highways, we still have setback of a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah. Even though, even if the highway right away is less, it's still a hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, so minus a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, I would even if you were to build now.
Yeah.
It would've been, do not idea.
I think you should move your house down.
The old house is even closer to the highway.
We'll have to add that to another agenda, okay, so here for the sake of time here, so we have a motion and a second. Just to clarify, the motion is to approve the building permit for Wes Mastol with a seventy-five foot setback variance from the center line of Main Street or Avenue, I don't know which one that is.
Do we, he'd be twentieth Avenue.
Twenty-first Avenue, okay, just for the specif- specifying in the motion, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion?
Could you go eighty?
What's that?
Could you go eighty? Five more feet?
See if he gets seventy-five, I guess, right?
Oh, would it work for you, is eighty feet, or no? Calculate it out for you.
That's, yeah.
Eighty, eighty-three feet.
It'll make it easier for us in the future.
Right, no, absolutely, absolutely.
I guess I'd, I'd see down the road.
I think it'd make much difference if it didn't.
Yeah, it does. You're grabbing, you're already toast. That's a tough deal.
Here's nobody, it may be different if there's.
If this was a new development.
Your farms down the road.
Well, there could be, there could be a farm going down the road.
Well, okay, uh.
That's a new construction.
In the grand scheme of things, since we're in the same discussion, if this permit is to be approved with a seventy-five foot setback, and he builds it at eighty, he's still in compliance, would that be the case?
Right.
So, we have a motion and a second with that crafted, if you guys are willing to give it at seventy-five and he builds it at seventy-seven, as long as he doesn't go inside seventy-five feet, technically he's in compliance with it, so.
It, it wouldn't, yeah, it's.
So, I, I'm just saying.
The overhang has to be within that seventy-five feet.
Hundred and sixty-two.
Minus seventy-five.
All right, you have a motion and a second, I'm, I'm gonna call for a roll call, go on, let's get this done here.
Everly?
Aye.
Holm?
No.
Mager?
Respectfully, no.
Materi?
Yes.
Miller?
I'm gonna have to say no.
So, the building permit with the variance seventy-five feet is denied, so. I'll undertake any more motions to approve table or deny building permit for Wes Mastol. Undertake a motion to approve table or deny. Want to see?
Yes, what do you?
Well, my suggestion is if nobody's got an idea, then we should restable it. Again, it's another idea, we, we do have an emergency meeting in two weeks. If you wanna act on it then, that way he doesn't have to wait an entire month, I'm fine with adding that to the agenda for the special meeting, or if not, undertake that motion.
So, what is your, what is your thing here, how, how far back do you think about the whole hundred feet or what?
Our deal says a hundred feet, I don't wanna create another variance for something that, you know, I just think it's gonna open another can of worms. That's the only thing I, you know, I got nothing against, it's just, it's in there, a hundred feet, that's. We keep, you know, allow it, we allowed it before and got in trouble with other things, and that's why I just figured no.
Well, I already break every rule in the county, so I'm not gonna do that anymore, so. If you wanna know my opinion, I'm, I'm done breaking rules.
You're, you're too hard, you're so.
No, I'm done breaking rules. No, I, I, like I said, that's.
So, a hundred feet, what, then you couldn't do it, couldn't put up your building or what?
A hundred feet would put me, I would have to be, I'd be tight with a sixty foot, tight against, tight against that other building. I mean, that would be, that's tight, you know, but it, 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 it could be done, I mean, it, it's, yeah.
But damn near impossible.
Yeah.
Building.
But I just, I just, I brought this to the attention, just figuring grandfather deal or whatever, whatnot, that other bin is there to begin with.
That's kinda odd.
Right, and if I don't do nothing, that bin isn't gonna move.
Yeah, I mean, that's the same.
And that bin, and that bin is seventy-three feet from there.
That's the same, maybe that off the shake, or when you put up the bin there, well, you can't set one bit back now, when the other ones are along the road, you know, that didn't make.
It just doesn't work, like I said, you might know it doesn't, but.
Then in theory, you gotta start someplace.
Yeah, but you gotta use a little common sense or something.
All at the same token, but you're gonna get yourself into trouble down here with somebody else there.
Is that trouble with Hazleton?
You got what?
Trouble with Hazleton, with those bins right up against the road.
Bin's up against the road?
Who's that?
That works.
Yeah, well, you're not gonna move them no more.
No, you're not gonna move them now. Was there a variance granted there, was?
There was.
So, when do you wanna start in this place?
I would like to do it this year yet, you know, but I, before I do anything, dirt work or lining anybody up with anything, I figured I'm gonna ask you guys or see what, see what we can do about it.
Well, rather than wait, we should grant something up.
Well, and, and if something happens, I probably won't build anything, I mean, it's just.
Decision's gotta get made here, if we're gonna, we're not gonna make a decision today, then you need to table it, that's right, and if we wanna bring it up at the next meeting in two weeks, maybe by then Wes maybe has a different plan, maybe somebody have a change of heart, whatever, I'm fine with that, but.
Well, I mean, we can give him a, a permit to put a building a hundred feet off, then he can still decide what he wants to do.
Could do that.
Yep, or just, yeah, get the permit for the building, I guess, and whatever, if I put it someplace else, I put it someplace else, or, or don't do it at all.
Right, I don't think you'd, probably get the building permit, I don't think that's an issue at all, I don't, I don't think that's.
But I, I didn't, I didn't put a, a definite size in stone, just because I knew this was gonna be, like I said, I, I figured, that's exactly what I figured, is if, if, if I move that bin, then we're gonna be back to the hundred feet deal. And, and if the bin stays there, it's seventy-three feet, that's where it's gonna, and I'm not gonna move the bin, you know, and I'm still gonna end up, it's still seventy-three feet from the center of the road. So, that's, yeah, like I said, I, 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 that's exactly what I figured, that you guys were gonna say, because, yeah, you moved the bin, well, now we gotta go back to the hundred feet business. Well, it's seventy-three feet from, from the road, but like I said, that's, that's your guys' call. Do things by the, by the, by the book, I guess, yeah?
The old blue book.
Yeah.
I, I can, I mean, the only thing I'll say is I can't fix the things that don't have my name on it, and I've made mistakes on things with my name on it, and.
Well, mistakes, nobody's perfect.
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, I, I totally understand, but there's already something there, so what's the problem, something there, well, I just put my name to that bin, and now that something is changing, my name's gonna go to it, I, I gotta go with what I stick by now. If it was a five foot variant, like even that one we talked about at Cattail, where we, I mean, we, we debated and debated and debated, and we gave what, a couple foot setback, it's such a different thing when you're talking twenty, thirty percent in the setback there, which is, which is, it's just, it's just a lot, and that's where I feel like some decisions gotta get made there, probably on both sides, if you're gonna allow variance in there, it's one thing to allow a few feet, a small percentage of it to make it work, I totally get it, but, that was my stance on it. I think, I think what we need to do is, like I said, if you think you wanna just rent a building permit, so at least he knows he can build a building on that property within the confines of the ordinance book, I think that'd probably be the best way to go, if you wanna debate a variance later, then you can just debate the variance, but the building permit would already be approved, or at least build it on stronger.
Well, that's, that's what I'm getting at, if he wants that now, he can have that now, and now, it depends on like, we're gonna change the variance anyway, the way.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, we tabled the Cattail Bay one, and at the next meeting, we changed our minds too, and that, so I mean, there's no guarantee on nothing.
On the size of the, what if, I mean, what if the size of the building changes, you know, on the permit, I put seventy-two by a hundred. Oh, well, for the same square footage, you could go sixty by one-twenty, I mean, is that gonna make a difference on?
Obviously, in the end, I don't think, if you're, if you're building it in the middle of your yard and it's twenty feet longer. Honestly, in the end, I don't think, if you're, if you're building it in the middle of your yard and it's twenty feet longer, ten feet wider, I don't, I mean. In theory, you should come and reapply or re, renew the permit, nobody's gonna oppose that. Just the big things, setbacks, and then any other ordinances, as long as it's not violating any of that. Apparently, he was gonna issue the building, building anywhere on that property, other than where the setback's alleged in, that's, that's my opinion, so.
Do you wanna leave these specs then at that? If we, uh, pass this permit and grant you the permit, would you wanna change a different size?
I don't know, I don't know if, if, you know, I guess if I gotta put it in a whole different location, I'll probably build an eighty by a hundred or one or something.
It's gonna be, yeah.
You know, I, I don't know, you know, I mean, it just.
I think it's.
Ideally, that's the perfect spot for this, for this building here, like I said, unless I put it quarter mile, you know, quarter mile away, or like I said, you get your, your hole. Then you may as well move everything up there, you know, really.
And if you build it smaller to comply with the setback, then you're defeating the purpose of building the shop you wanna build, or just to get your equipment inside.
For your benefit.
Right, so I, yeah, I mean, I get that, that's exactly what I mean.
Well, I would make a motion to grant him a variance, or grant, grant him a permit, and then he can put it where he wants him. If he wants to stay within a hundred feet and build a narrow one, then he can do that too.
So Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve a building permit for Wes Mastol. But no variance. Just to be clear, like, just, you're approving the building permit, but it's gotta comply with the ordinances, that's true, so that motion by Commissioner Everly is our second, that motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Miller, so we have a motion and a second to approve the building permit for Wes Mastol. To construct a seventy-two by a hundred farm shop on the southwest corner of section four, township one-twenty-nine, range seventy-four. So any more discussion on the building permit for Wes Mastol?
The only thing, it doesn't matter what size, it couldn't be as long as he's off the right away, you know what I mean?
Well, the only difference is that part of the permit still has other, I mean, even for just other clerical information, you're gonna have to probably update the size.
Well, he might have to change it if he's.
Right, but I don't think anybody's gonna have a problem with that.
I guess, yeah, once I get it set in stone, the, the size, I can let you guys know if I'm sure.
Anybody's got a problem with the permit, as long as it gets put in the right spot, so we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on the building permit for Wes Mastol?
Unless you wanted to wait, and, well, you're gonna, I mean, that's why we're doing it now, so if you wanna get going with it or whatever, you can.
Well, yeah, I don't know, well, I don't know what I'm gonna do here now, I guess, it's all good, but, you know, I'm gonna have to sit there with a tape measure and a case of beer on the chair in the middle of the.
Maybe just measure before you start your.
The whole case is very easy, no?
I was gonna say, I was actually offered a come not for happy, you know, like. Well, we have a motion and a second, building permit for Wes Mastol, is there any more discussion? If I'm hearing any, we'll do a roll call, we'll say.
Everly?
Yes.
Holm?
Yeah.
Maygrove?
Yes.
Materi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Building permit approved.
Thanks, Wes.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, guys, yeah. Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Like my, my, that gravel road, um, um, got like last year, bladed twice for the whole year, you know, is, is they, are they gonna?
Yeah, we now have a, we didn't have a full-time blade operator in that area.
Like sou- southern areas, color, even the Farm and Market Road from Hague up to Highway thirteen, they bladed it two or three times last year. Right, shouldn't, in theory, shouldn't them roads get bladed once a week?
Well, if we add the manpower to it, yes.
You know, I mean, I just, I don't know how you guys get funded for the federal roads, but, I mean, Ethan ran the frigging Farm and Market Road thirty miles an hour last, all, all year.
Right, we now have a full-time blade operator in that area.
In that area, you know, cause that, like, southern, I mean, we just get the shaft down here for, for, and, and it's not, it's not your fault, I know you're the road superintendent or whatever, but. The whole, I mean, it's like we get forgotten about down there, snow removal, I mean, if we wouldn't open our own roads in the winter time. Yeah, we'd be stuck home for two months, you know? But, not just, I was just kinda questioning that, if, if.
We now have a.
If we can get some blade operators.
Get some roads bladed down there.
Yeah, your area was hurt last year.
Right, right now, there's rocks, there's rocks this deep in the road going down to my yard, you know, just driving with, with vehicles, getting out of there and over. So this is gonna bring that to your attention, or, yeah, that somebody should be out driving around and working out these roads in, in our part of the, in our part of the road down there. Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Skylar? So piggybacking on that conversation with Wes a little bit, there was a conversation about bringing on another temporary blade operator for the summer, did you do that?
I made him an offer. He countered. I made another offer. And now we countered again, so.
And just to be clear, that operator's David Crum, right?
Correct. Correct, David Crum wants to, was, was willing to come back, um.
Temporary for the summer.
Comes temporary help for just the summertime, he can just work when it's nice, if it rains, he goes home, there's no benefits to this, it's just an hourly rate that we would pay him.
So how much, how much, what can, what kinda deal can we get him?
Well, is he on probation like he was there when he left?
Well, no, he's no longer an employee here, so. He's just a citizen now with blade experience.
I know he said he was about thirty-five bucks, just no benefits or nothing.
So how this all happened was, I mean, obviously, we're advertising for. What's that?
What is the regular blade operator, like, what is it then?
What is our blade operator, uh, varies, I mean, cars in the thirty-two, thirty-three dollars an hour.
That, yeah, just a rough idea, yeah.
Right, and, but then they, they do get vacation time and benefits like that. Um, obviously, we have a truck driving positions open, we've been advertising for a month now, I think, close to it. With no avail, I mean, trying to get some summer help that way. Between that and some stuff that went on, he just contacted, said he was interested in possibly coming back. Then he contacted me about it, then we talked about it. He's an experienced blade operator. Do we need some help out on the road? Yep.
I think everybody would like him down there.
Right, but we, I mean, he, he won't just be down there, I mean, if we're gonna use him, we're gonna use him to catch up a little bit, and then, I mean, we know, we all know that. In the springs, our roads are in bad shape, there's a lot that need to be pulled up and reshaped, they can't drain, get soft, so we, we have to do that. If we try to do that now with our workforce, something else has to suffer. Whether it be installing culverts, hauling gravel, everything we do outside of just running that blade on top of the road, something else has to suffer.
Why would we do this with Mr. Crum that left? And Mr. Lawler submitted that he was willing to bring his equipment onboard for so much an hour and run a route?
Because, because we're no longer, we don't need the extra equipment, we have the equipment on hand, like, we have an extra, extra motor grader. I think Mr. Lawlers was to run his motor grader and stuff like that, this is all new, and that's, this is a discussion we can have.
Well, if you were running on his equipment, ours would not be anywhere else, that's worth something too, though.
Right, but that's also, you're paying for that piece of equipment just to sit there, then.
Do you have some sit-in?
Yeah, we have one extra, one, one, we have one spare motor grader that I, I get in when I have time, or if one breaks down, then that operator moves over there. So, I mean, we're not. How do I wanna word this?
What do you think?
It's not the, it's not the, you're, you're, you're putting a, a, a name to that position, really, like. If anybody else wanted to come in and offer to be a blade operator at the temporary for the county, you know, that's Monday through Thursday, forty-hour work weeks. You know, using the county equipment, stuff like that, I mean, if, if that's a position we wanna open up, I mean, we do have summer help positions opened up. We were just mainly focusing on truck drivers, so we could get some help hauling gravel. If we would want, we can open up a summertime equipment operator position and then go that route.
Conversation that happened with me, just so you guys know too, just cause it's, it's not like there was some plan to hire David Crum, what happened was, is I got contacted by. No less than probably a dozen people in the Hague area that said that David Crum would like to run blade for him, it's coming for the summer, I knew nothing about it. So I contacted Skylar, and he said, yeah, he, he kinda heard that David was maybe interested, and I said, well, if David contacts you or anything. If you can work out something as the road superintendent, let me know, just see what happens, and I never heard back, so I'm assuming they didn't hear nothing, they didn't work it out, but. The plan was, I mean, we had a position open for a.